All right. Thanks for your patience. We'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock with a, how about a roll call? Jen?
Sue Erickson.
Here.
Ken May.
Here.
Joel Newman is absent. Sean Burtzall.
Here.
Craig Conley.
Here.
All right, our consent agenda here, approval of tonight's agenda, approval of our expenditures, and then approve and file our minutes from our meeting on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Mark, did that resolve all the pump issues? I didn't understand that that fifty-seven hundred is that, they put that in bed for you?
For what?
The pump on?
Yep.
No, that was the nagging.
Was that out?
That was all three pumps, pool, main, and sewage pumps.
I haven't made it off the cemetery. I assume you were resurfacing some out there?
We're doing a little bit.
Is that at the entrance?
Entrance and then a few other spots.
That one dip at the, you know, when you're coming out of there and it's like, that's fixed.
Yeah.
And then there's a couple other spots that were patched throughout there.
Washed out. Water gets high before, several years ago.
Yeah.
The Rockford Trailside and Sports Park, that will cover when we get to the Sports Park update.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, parking lots back in home, they have a parking lot.
Yeah, I would drive out there on your golf cart. We have an actual parking lot that's.
Yeah, I've been out there.
Okay.
I didn't know how that fit into the master plan, that's why.
Perfect.
A little dirty. Don't let it hurt. Well, smart point.
Water meters, it's that's more, it's more than just that, but water meters and country.
Like one of my house.
Yep, okay, great.
Are we blending now or?
Mm-hmm.
Did we stop for a while?
Almost. Nope. You're not stopped.
Do we think we'll keep on blending for a while?
Hope so.
So long.
Don't see, yeah, we haven't, we have been for quite a while.
Yeah. Okay, Ben. We'll almost go through the consent agenda.
So.
Approving the consent agenda, all those in favor?
I have.
Opposed? Any objections? No? All right, we'll jump right into our citizens forum here and a lot of people here, which is really great to see a lot of faces, so we'll start on the sheet here, and then if you're not on the sheet, you're welcome to stand up and talk, raise your hand. I would just ask, since we have a big group, if you don't mind just saying your name, and then proceeding with what you would like to discuss. I have Ken Sampson first here. Yeah, Ken?
I just had a question about Second Avenue, I live at five oh five second property out here.
Yeah.
And like it was, was last year gonna be the fourth? If city put no parking signs on the north side of the street? And I'm just curious about, not, it doesn't bother me, but I just have always wondered why.
Uh, we just picked a, cause there was two blocks previously that were uh, no parking on the north side, so we just made the whole north side that.
But there was no, the various reasons or nothing was.
No, just because we went with press, because there was two blocks already, so we just continued that.
Enough.
Consistency throughout.
It's the only reason why.
Yep.
I'm just curious.
That's all?
That's all.
Okay. Okay, um, Greg Burtzall.
My problem is, food trucks parked, I live at five oh six, need. They put the generator out in the street. And it points right at my apartment. And I listened to it, you know, from noon till, who knows, maybe. And it's out in the traffic. And they move it to the other side, or can you make it?
Yeah.
In one other side of the lot.
Show you of the other side of their trailer, I can show you a picture. If you'd like to see it.
If you guys want to. I mean, I know, I know what you're talking about. I've been there, I've seen it.
They put a cone out there for it, so people know it's there, but it's. Why put it in the street? I don't have a problem with food trucks.
Mm-hmm.
I go there ain't sometimes, but I don't wanna listen to that generator all day either.
Yeah, it's a noise thing, right?
Yeah, it was on the other side, we're having the same issue with.
Yeah.
So I mean, Artie, do you guys have any ideas, solutions for that?
Um, not at this time, I mean.
You running power for them?
Well, our power to both buildings are capped.
How about trying soundproof boxes? You build something, I mean, you have to be generic, four pieces or something set around them?
I'd say probably seventy-five, eighty percent of the guys are all running those predator generators, so they're pretty quiet. I mean, they don't really bother us when we're sitting on the patio, so like, I don't know, they're just right there by us, I don't seem to have to bother them. We've tried to glue them to one end or the other, just depends on each truck, you know, whether or not they got extra cabling or all that stuff to run an extension from one end to the other. Sometimes they just got a short loop. That's what, that's where they're at, so.
Yeah.
We tried to move them around a little bit.
Yeah, I know that after that meeting we had last week, that or last month was the worst I've seen it, with the two generators on this side of the truck. Now, you had to, that, that closed that down, that was bad. And then I do get what the neighbors are saying with the noise.
But we are in a commercial district, right? We don't have a noise, noise over there, it's still what, ten thirty, eleven?
Probably. It's just a neighborly thing.
It is, but. It's also a difference, right?
Yeah. But you say you're good neighbors, so I think a simple solution to try something.
Yeah.
A sound barrier or.
Yeah.
You know, something.
We're up to try any of that.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we're not, I just.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I, I noticed that they put two tables up around the generator, and that helped a ton. Because the noise wasn't going straight out, it's going up more. Something like that work?
You work on like an insulated box or something.
That's what I was just like, couple panels to not even.
It doesn't overheat the generator.
Well, yes, that's what you wanna, we wanna cover it, but.
No, no.
And everything's gonna be different, you don't know what they're bringing.
There too, so there's already electricity, so you can rather pay it, well, to eat and exhaust it away.
Right. Yeah, I, I think if we, if we could figure something out, you know, it's, it's a reoccurring complaint, it's come from different areas, uh, we appreciate what you guys are, you know, what you do and that you try to create a place and bring some different businesses into town, it is a benefit, we there, you know, from time to time. So appreciate that, but if we could, if we could figure something out, you know, and even if it was a situation, I would, our economic development team, if you wanna put together a pricing and come to the committee and, and talk to them about that, I mean, at least they could at least consider it, looking at, if you're wanting to put power in, we could look at something like that, if you put the idea together, the cost together and you know, not saying that the economic development committee is gonna say, yeah, but if it, if it makes sense and, and it helps you guys, I think they would consider it. But the soundproofing thing, you guys are so handy over there with everything you built. If you could slap something together and just try it for a weekend.
We'll try one here and see if it helps.
If you'd be up for it, I mean, I think it'd be appreciated.
I think it'd be a simple for.
Yeah, consideration which, which trucks you get or which ones, if they've got it, if they don't have a, on a generator, it's, they go down the list.
Yeah.
It's nine day difference, they, they got one of those hot in the predator, you can't hardly hear from them.
Yeah.
It's great.
I just wanna jump in really fast, real quick, uh, we have the sheriff's department here, so they're better off on the streets instead of in here, so.
Actually, just sort of call, that's why I was late, um, yeah, we didn't really have any, you know, um. That you do with, or you're dropping off on, I know it's Gilbert related, but you guys see our post about that, the underdog attack.
This, this is the knife, was this the knife attack over the weekend?
Yeah, so targeted, not like people felt really concerned about, you know, going out at night or when, when it's dark out, but um, it's that time of year again where people, it is nicer, so we always say lock your car and lock your house and stuff like that, no makers on target, but on the other hand, I would say, if you hear murmurs or you hear people talking about it, or you have family up in that area, and they have any additional information, I was, I was just sitting online, but. Uh, they can really, when you get to the family, they've got to give it to them. Anything we get mad, it's recording those, and, um, yeah, other than that, there's nothing crazy, crazy that I look at the tower recording this.
There's just one that sticks out to me that, and maybe you can't tell a lot, maybe you can, but there's a scam one on here. Uh, listed as scam that was almost four hours. Do you think that was an error, or do you think there's some sort, there was something, or could you look into it and just email something to?
I don't have.
Yeah, no worries, I'm putting, I'm putting you on the spot, that's just a weird one to see four hours for a scam related item.
Look it up on my computer.
Is that something people should be, is it door to door or something that people should be aware of, or? And it could be the, you know, the clock maybe.
Or it's the info at thirty-two oh three Slater.
Let's see, no, further down, sorry.
Okay, that one.
Yeah, three fifty-nine there, I'm just curious, that's a lot of time on a.
Yeah, I got you.
On a scam related call. Is somebody going door to door, and do we need to put something on? Yeah.
Sometimes what happens is they'll, they'll get the call, and then they'll get put on the hole.
Yeah.
Or like, if you put it on the hole or something. The clock keeps running, I'm very late to you guys, and.
Yeah.
Um, so.
If it's just something we should warn residents about, I know at one point we've had door to door people that are.
You guys do permits?
That stuff. We do, yep.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah. If it was just something specific, we'd be happy to get the word out.
If it's nothing, you won't hear it.
All right. Okay.
Yeah, I just get stressed with, with the warm weather, that, I don't wanna go back to, you know, three, three years ago where we're making you know, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen carburetors or four, it's cause, um, we don't. Did we have a target rich environment, we, uh, it was down here, so, I'm sure you guys were around in twenty twenty-two, that summer was really, really bad. We had like seven firearms stolen from the city, which had been bad, really bad, or, you know, they have them recovered, they would have been crying, so.
Yeah.
I just can't stress it enough, um. Yeah.
Perfect. Well, thanks, thanks for being here, thanks for responding to our calls.
You guys have anything, any questions or concerns?
Awesome. Yeah, thanks for being here. Okay, um. So. Next, I'm gonna go to Alan, and then I know you had raised your hand, we'll come, come to you right after Alan, okay? Go ahead, Alan, the floor's yours. If you could share your name, maybe.
Name is Alan Subia, I own the fourplex next door, and I'm mostly Norwegian, and I get the views, I don't, I don't forget it. And there's more, very right here, I'm still here, still here complaining, okay?
Okay.
Look at there, he's ours, arms clause, okay? Well, what happened today, you know, I had a bad day, I'm sorry, but I decided that I would save the, the, the slayer some money, and I would pull up the, um, the minutes of the meeting. I pulled up the agenda, I got that, I put up the minute of the meeting, and it locked up my computer. It did. Okay, so, well, I was in a hurry, so they said, well, here, just, um, it's, it's, it's Microsoft, it'll fix you right up, and so we just enter these code numbers. I did. A big compromise. So, okay, now, I have no power over that, do I? And they got all my, all my data. So I had to change my checking account, all my investments, and I did that this afternoon. But one point I wanna make is, I have no power over that. When the city does stuff to me, I have no power what they do, I have to accept it. And it goes way back to you were mayor, I pay a hundred and, a hundred and eighty dollars a month for services over the new, but I get nothing. I got, I have, I have no three meters, I have no, uh, uh, sewer taps in the, I've been paying that every month, a hundred and eighty bucks every month. And nobody wants to do anything about it, and it just, it angers me, and the group of us, we have, we have four complexes, and we have the motorhome, fifty thousand dollars a year comes in as junk, junk fees that, that the city has to pay nothing for, they just collect the money, they do nothing, and so that's, that's my big issue.
I'm watching.
Still here.
Ten minutes.
Nobody seems to wanna do anything, and so, anyway, okay, now I got one more question, one more comment here. And Taylor, you're a nice guy, you really are, you do a lot of things, nice. But last time, you talked about we gotta incentivize people, you remember that? You gotta incentivize people, he said it several times, you gotta incentivize. Well, you incentivize somebody, that means you put, you provide resources, money, so they'll behave the way you want them to behave, that's what it amounts to. We call it incentivize, what would be another good term for that? Start with B.
Bribe.
Bribe. Right. Okay, so I want to just tell you to be careful with that, especially, you got a company, and you wanna incentivize your employees, that's okay, but when you wanna incentivize people here, are you using our money to incentivize, then, uh, you need to be cautious on incentivize people, and I have trouble with, uh, with ciders over here, we spent four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars of sewer money that we all had to pay for, and our goose paid fifty thousand, and so we can incentivize. And so I'm just showing that out to you, you know, as a. And so are you picking up when I'm setting down?
I appreciate what you're saying, Alan. Appreciate you being here, I just would wanna clarify, your definition for the fees are junk fees, it's connection, that, it's defined as a connection fee, and we define connection fees based on units, so it's, I've investigated it, it's, it's in order, we're not trying to do anything nefarious here, and it's, it's the way it's been done, it's defined that way, there's a precedent years beyond my time here. So I just wanna clarify, when you say junk fees, that's a personal opinion, it, they are defined as connection fees, it, and the connection fees are assessed based on units inside of our code.
You wanna, you want me to respond to that?
You're welcome to a brief response, cause you're already at your three minutes, so I'm being kind here on the brief response.
Number one, it was an old ordinance, it was fif- ten or fifteen years old, and it really meant new construction, no, if you're gonna build a fourplex, you gotta put meters in all, all four of them. Okay, mine was not, and all, were not built that way, they had one master meter, and the, the landlord pays the water, water bill, not the tenant, so you don't have to go after the tenants to get the money, if we can't pay it, you can assess the poverty, okay? And so you've taken that, and, and, and nobody was on the committee that represents us when you made the decision, you just made this, and you're exploiting us by it, and you don't wanna change it, see?
I can't, I can't speak to that, Alan, you and I've had these conversations. You know, I told you I do my research, I've done my research, I've talked to some other towns, we're not alone in this practice, this practice is not an uncommon practice in the state of Iowa, other cities do that. I shared information with you regarding where you can go look up and look at the connection fees in other towns inside the county. Our connection fees aren't ridiculous compared to other towns in the county. Our connection fees are fair, Craig and I did the research on all the county and the state, so I appreciate it, I, Alan, Alan.
I need another comment.
Last comment.
Get the last word here.
You can have the last comment.
Okay, one more comment is, you don't pay connection fee, do you?
I actually pay four of them, but.
Four, would you pay two on your business over here?
I pay at my house, I pay two at my rental property, I pay another at my other rental property.
Okay.
I pay connect, I pay as many connection fees as you do.
You got a business over there, do you pay connection fee on that business? You're on, you're on a bicycle shop.
I have a connection fee at my house down that way.
Okay, Joel is not here, you run a business across the street? And you have a business, you should pay another connection fee, another fifty bucks, he doesn't pay it there. Cam dust.
All right, thank you, Alan, for being here. Every time, we do appreciate your input, we're still friends, we appreciate your input. All right, so Alan was the last one to sign up, but Miss, Mrs. Ransom, right? Man.
The city have a noise code.
Good to look it up. It's pretty general, I know, but I don't know the specifics off the top of my head. Absolutely.
Yep. We, we use.
Downright danger. It's gonna be a major accident there one day, and I'm concerned about that.
Yeah.
Something else that goes along with that, too, that stretch of road is like a drag. Both with Harley Davidson, and kids with cars. I think there's gonna be a bad crash there someday.
Yeah. We hope not, uh, parking has been a big topic. Um, obviously, as our main street grows, and we hope it continues to grow, we're gonna have to come up with some solutions associated with that, I know Craig has invested time doing, in talking to the businesses here, I know Mark has been interested in investigating and determining, how can we maximize the number of spaces, where do we need to add spaces, how can we keep food, how can we move food trucks off that road to help congest it, what can we do to figure out a solution? Um. And it's, it's a hard balance, you know, and I know, remember John Kaler sitting here talking about the challenges of, you add businesses to town, and it just brings another problem, and you gotta keep chasing fixing the next problem, and I think the good news for us is our main street's not dead, the bad news is now we have other problems that we gotta address somehow.
They have a control interception down here at the docks. Most of the cars, you come up to that stop sign, right?
On Boone Street, where I, right where I used to live, you're talking, yeah. Yeah. And we've been, we have, I have admittedly applied a lot of pressure on our sheriff's department, cause we contract with them to provide our policing, I have applied a lot of pressure to them. I think before the last two meetings, they hadn't been in attendance to a council meeting in over six months.
I haven't seen a sheriff deputy in this town for a long time.
They're spending more time here now than, than they have historically, this month, this month alone, I can just tell you, and I, I would like it to be more as well, but they were giving, they gave us about fifty-five hours this month, fifty-four on the dot. So. It, it's definitely something that we're cognizant of, and we know we, we want them to be patrolling and taking care of those offenders.
And it is about every intersection. I mean, it's not.
Yeah.
Yes, it's all over town.
Yep, we have big, first staff and.
We make sure they, they're aware of it.
Yeah. Did you guys, just one second, okay, did you guys have anything else, Stephen, man? We'll get an answer on that ordinance for you. We'll get a response to you.
I'm, I'm Keith Edlin. Uh, gotten about response to parking down through here and everything. Gary Burkstrom owns a lot down here past this fourplex, and, uh, he has told me, he said, there's not supposed to be anybody parking there. Well, the other night, they were parking on private property down there.
On the lot, car tree?
We have permission.
No, you don't.
Well, his son said we could. He was, he was, he was at the bar the night of the car show.
Gary's the one that owns it.
I'm just, so, his son said.
Yeah, yeah, if Gary would like to reach out and share that, I mean, I, we would, we would love to hear from Gary if he's got a, if he's got concerns with that, he's welcome to reach out to me. He's welcome to reach out to me, but ultimately, I didn't, I'd encourage him to give Artie a call and Roger if that was a problem.
That's just car show night, you guys use that, right?
What's that, just when, just?
It was just this car show night, yeah.
Yeah, that's a thing he should talk about.
Gary and Steve.
I think, I think they can make a call to them for sure.
Yeah, cause I asked before we did it.
Yeah.
Hey, is this still okay if we pull, pull park into that grass area? I think it's absolutely.
Yeah.
So that's what I just wanted to ask.
Yeah. It sounds like a miscommunication. It, it sounds like a miscommunication, and, and obviously, private property, you know, uh.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing we can do about that.
It's a, that's a hard topic for us, it's not really one for us to be.
To know that the actual owner of the property was not happy with it.
Yeah.
We'll definitely make sure we talk about it. You get it.
Is there anybody else? Ellen, hi. Ellen Thornwall.
I love this. And I think everybody down in our area loves the grid, and so, I'm sorry, people are having such noise issues, but I, I think they're great, and it's a great boost for Slater to pull them in here, so that's all.
Perfect, thank you.
So, on your, on your driving complaints and traffic complaints?
Yep.
I, I've talked to the chief deputy up there and just called the sheriff's office, we don't have to run a two city council, let the council know, but use the sheriff's office as a resource, if they, they don't mind getting up the traffic complaint calls, so call the sheriff's office, they do traffic complaints, so their cars out of, you'll have a call your service on traffic.
Yeah.
And stuff like that, so, when you've got issues, call them and let them know, because we're, we're obviously missing something in, in communication or response or anything else, so that, that you can do is call the sheriff's office and, and they complain, and then it's trafficable and everything else.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great point.
Number, should people call if they have a problem?
Eight two six five six six.
Eight two six five six six, can we have that in the minutes, so if somebody was?
Non-emergent.
Yeah, non-emergent.
That's a non-emergency number. Do you have them?
Chad, if I can just clarify for a second, you're talking to everybody here as a general rule, not specifically a council. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, that anybody should call, just same as fireworks, anything else, that's gonna be the next, that's gonna be next month is fireworks, like, so.
Yeah.
So, anybody that, you have a fire, somebody shooting off fireworks next to you, bringing it to us in the middle of July won't do you any good, call the sheriff's department that night, and, and, um, give me a dress.
I know, I know North First gets a lot of traffic complaints, uh, and that, this corner's always been a lot of people on the stop sign, but it's, it's known, and the more, the more we have complaints about it, the more trafficable and more accountable we hold the sheriff's office.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make that.
And that, they are our police force, right, they are city of Slater police, if you will, that's, that's who we contract for, so if they had that on their cars, we'd call them more frequently, probably. Good, good point, Chad, thank you. Anyone else?
Park drivers?
Mark?
I just like to speak about food trucks as well, I own the apartment complex right across the street, you know, and so two things, one, the parking is pretty bad on the weekends, I try to pull out the mower, there's nowhere to park, I gotta park a block down and ride my mower back around and get up there and mow it. The other thing is the amount of trash that's being left in my lawn when I mow it. So there turns an issue with trash, and then overall, how narrow that is in between those two areas, and I think that's dangerous.
Yeah, no.
I wanna be on the record for that.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that, thanks for coming and stating that, we are actively trying to figure out a parking solution. Anyone else? No? All right, awesome, that concludes the citizens forum then, and we'll move into some presentations, we spoke with the sheriff here. Would just reiterate Chad's, uh, great remark, contact the Story County Sheriff's Office when we run into issues like that um, with traffic. Uh, Lion Energy, Mason Adams and Michael.
I don't see them in attendance.
Okay.
They were attending another meeting first from Cambridge, so they were gonna run late, so we might bring them back in as they show up.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, are they?
They're right outside.
If everyone could just be staring at the door when they walk in.
Put them on the sky.
That'll really help them come in.
Might go to the library.
Uh, Jen, do you wanna give us your update?
All right, well, I'll be quick, cause it's like we have a lot to talk about, and we already have a lot, so, right now at the library, we are heavy into our summer reading program, we had our kickoff last Thursday at Nelson Park, there are about three hundred people there. Um, our theme of the summer is mild about reading, and we have a variety of programs all summer long for all ages. Um, there are flyers up here, if anybody wants to know more about it, you can go to our website. Um, and all of these businesses have contributed to provide everything you do, create charge to all the families that participate, so we're really, really thankful for that. Um, right now, we have three hundred and eighty kids registered, which is record breaking for us, especially to start off at the start of the summer. Um, which that's roughly like a hundred and eighty families, I think, so it's a lot of kids and a lot of people. We have several of our programs that we have had to close because they are full, and we don't have space, um, to have any more kids than that in them. Um, we have moved several, why should say, all except for our Thursday program, we've moved back to the library this year, and in order to make that work, um, we basically have been kicking out siblings and parents, so we're making a lot of our programs drop off programs to where the parents need to come, bring their kids, and leave, because we do not have room otherwise, but that allows us to do more um, age appropriate programs for the younger kids that we can really zero in on, um, uh, their age groups and doing lessons that are, um, spec- specifically for them without having the distractions of younger or older siblings, um. And when we were at the park, there's just a lot of distractions because you're outside, so we're really trying to, um, do more um, with that, and just zeroing in on the educational aspects of those programs, we do have some really fun things too, that, um, large programs that need to remain at the park, this Thursday, we have a science, um, show coming, and so kids can, and families can come to that, um, so that'll be a really, really fun program. Um, this week alone, we have thirteen programs that we are doing between Monday and Saturday, so. Um, this week alone, we have thirteen programs that we are doing between Monday and Saturday, so we are busy a lot of the time. Um, tonight as we speak, we have um, kids coming to read to therapy dogs. Um, that have um, come from the American Rescue League. And so that has been a really good program that kids can practice their reading to these therapy dogs and they do some other fun things. Um, we had two book clubs this morning for our third through fifth graders in our middle school. Um, we've got An adult exercise program this Friday at ten o'clock. And next week we have a reptile program. We have a field trip for the tween and middle schoolers to go to a musical up in Ames in a couple of weeks. And um, one of the things that's new this year that we're excited about is we are doing a children's only farmer's market in July. So this is just for the kids to come and sell their own things. So we have kids doing produce, we have kids making crafts, we have kids baking. We have all of that and then in order to prepare them for that, they have two Sessions that they can come to where they can learn how to count back money and make a business plan and make their signage and things like that, so um, I don't have the, I actually forgot to write the date down. I wanna say July eighth, but keep that on your calendar because come and support those kids. That would mean a lot to them for Them to see the people come and look at the things that they have done and buy their. So right now it's at the library and like outside of the library, if we have more kids than we can Have there, we'll probably have to move to the bar, so um, we'll be advertising that on our Facebook pages. Uh, on our Facebook page and Instagram and keeping that updated on our Website too, so um, those are just a few things. Like I said, there's multiple things every week, so if you don't follow us on Social media, please do so. We keep that updated regularly. And everything is on our website at slaterlibrary.org and we have a very comprehensive calendar that shows you everything that is happening Um, throughout the week there too, with all the links for everything, so.
Jen, question? A, impressive.
Oh.
B, uh, any pushback on Asking the parents not to hang around?
Um, not pushed back, they understand. I've, I've had a few like So I think the one that they're a little like, oh, because it's like going into kindergarten and kindergarten age is one of them and they're like, we really need the kids here. And we're like, well, you can, you know, like stay around close. We just need, we don't have room in the building. This keeps, you know, Keeps the distractions down. We're, you know, we're in one big space, so even if people are over in the kids area, like today we had A couple of families that were in there while we had the um, third through fifth graders going on and any noise over there is Loud, you know, and so trying to keep them on task with, with the lesson that we're doing is harder. Um, so I only had one on, she's like, are you really like, she's like, I'll be sitting out, sleeping my coffee. I'm like, that's great. We can open up the senior center. You can be right here next door if you want to. You know, go use the park, go grab a coffee at public house, you know, so we, we um, So I wouldn't say there's been, some people are just like, really? Are you sure? But we have um, lots of staff and volunteers. So we're just gonna be right there working, you know, closely with the kids and making, dropping them off and the map and pick them up forty-five minutes.
Cause all I hear is, is a lot of the pushback, they'll just end up moving on mainstream.
Exactly. Yeah, we'll be encouraging that, so yeah.
Thank you so much.
Jen, I want to quick to, I don't, I don't, I'm sure you don't keep track and I'm, I'm not wanting you to Track numbers anymore than you're already doing, but ballpark idea of, of are we having to turn away Slater residents? When you close a program, do you have any idea of what, what numbers you serve that are? And, and not, I don't, I don't mean just, our, our library covers a wider area than that, but We collect taxes. I feel like we need to serve those people first and not turn them away.
Right, um, so I don't have that number exactly. I will say I feel like the majority of everyone that's been able to come has been able to come. I just had to shut it off within like the last week. Yeah. So you're talking maybe a handful of people that didn't make it in. Um, but I think one thing, especially with our summer program that's To remember is it's not taxpayer money because it is all funded by the businesses and Of probably the majority of businesses are not Slater businesses that have um, done that, so I don't feel bad about that personally.
Good, thanks.
Awesome. Min American or Lion Energy, I shouldn't say that, right? That's a cardinal sin. They're coming after you guys. No, thank you for being here. If you guys would introduce yourselves and then give us your update.
Yeah, sure, uh, Mason Adam, Senior Key Account Manager, uh, Lynn Nuxley. I'm Mike Alderson, uh, Cedar Correction Coordinator, Conover Charlie, the large rebuilds in the A Zone. Uh, the reason why we're here, sure most of you guys know we were here was two years ago, Mark.
Mm-hmm.
We did a bunch of underground, put the nasty plywood kits down, the transformer should be. We are exactly through the transformer shortage, but we're got enough to get the project done. It was, I fought tooth and nail with my company to get this one done. This is one of the first ones we did that got kind of pushed outside. So we are coming back. Um, anticipated uh, time. The crew we're doing this is the original internal line energy construction crew. They're in Jamaica right now. They're going to Ralston next and then they're coming here. anticipate them end of July, going into August. We should be done with everything within two and a half, three months, we're thinking. Um, piece of white White digging uh, for, for cuddles, sort of for the city guys. There's a whole devices out here that we aren't allowed to use anymore for safety reasons. They're not energized now. We gotta replace those, so there's been heavy digging on around those with nothing like it was before. Um, restoration will black dirt Our areas, but grassy down. We asked residents if they can, will the water can on there? Um, I know it's weird this year we haven't had to do that. Hopefully the water rain keeps coming. Um, other than that, if I touch base with you guys, saying that you guys have a problem about You're coming back and we'll be here hopefully end of July for first. So I'm, I can answer some questions if you guys have it.
One question, my neighborhood, there's a sidewalk that was dug up and just some gravel dumped in. Will you be fixing those sidewalks too?
But that never got done?
Correct.
Uh, what is your ex?
Second, it, it's at the corner of Second and Lynn Street, the southeast corner.
Sorry about that, uh, no, it was perfect. I mean, it probably just got missed.
It's easy to drop by the wayside, yeah.
I'll put that on the list, but I do have a full dock at next to the leaves, but I'll try to get some eyes on it and get that repaired for you guys. Sorry about that. Um, poles. We went underground with our primary and our secondary. If there was an overhead service to the house, it will remain overhead. Um, we will pull up poles we can. There is attachment companies on these poles as well. If we are done with that pole, with the chainsaw, we'll cut above. Their attachments and that pole ownership we transferred to, who are the attachments are, but we will transfer a weekend and pull a weekend. So just maybe like, maybe like, there are still be poles up in town, you know?
Okay, I had a next year with four bucks. I've got a new pole on the lot line and an old pole in from ways. Okay, now are you gonna take the old pole out eventually? It's also got a cable On it.
That's what I'm talking about. If we can transfer that cable to a new pole, we will. If we cannot transfer it, it will be no, no pole till the, till the. We'll.
Other overhead service. It could be media com, it, it could be another service.
It's, it's the neighbors, it isn't my line. I don't even use it.
And it's one of the main word and that's, that's, that's just, oh, it's still the same at that line.
It just depends on the service on it. If it's theirs, it's going away if it can.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we do pull, we can, like I said, I, I don't mind looking for a pole, it's sometimes just unfortunate. I know their attachment companies have in, putting some money in their facility too. I gotta redo the renewal or burying everything too, so over there, over there.
Perfect. Anybody else? Any other questions?
If people wanna know the scope of it, is that available anywhere?
No, it's not. I can't, for infrastructure reasons, I can't release our infrastructure maps, but they can just recall it on our line and about it, I mean, I can go to the top of them, but If you were here a little bit, a couple of years ago, you know you're in the area of where we're being. We tore it up pretty good and helped with the grass, we're back the most far. Um, you still remember them if we have issues or.
I think so, yeah. I'm pretty sure I do. I would just say too that uh, obviously when they're in town, they're super approachable. I know you walked with me on my main street house and looked at where we were gonna have to move poles and et cetera. And so I would say they're, you know, you can approach them and they'll get you to Michael and he'll be great about helping you. Or talking with you on it at least, super, super kind and generous with your time.
It could be no, but I'll definitely sit down here and try, try to work with the guys, but um, we do have those too, so.
Just a question, it's kind of arm you. I've got one gas meter serves four units over here. You're not gonna make, put four gas meters in, are you?
Ooh, I don't do the gas anymore. You guys call one hundred lions. I'm sorry, uh, Jerry Reston says local build red.
Perfect. Awesome. Well, thank you guys for being here.
Thanks.
Appreciate, oh, go ahead. Sorry, one last question.
Now the seminar alley and one in the street from the library that's.
Just the settling on the board lines, is that?
That could be, that could be truck, it could be truck traffic as well. I know we spend a lot of money and time and effort with rock. I worked, I worked with Mark too, as far as getting all the pothole that we did two years ago. If they are back, I'll look into them, but my chances, I'm, my guts telling me it's from Traffic.
The settling.
If you've got issues, Dave, just reach out to me. I'm Mark Skew, yeah, just uh, reach out to those areas and we'll.
Yeah, just, I would let city hall know. You know, an address of what you find. What you see.
You're worried driving around.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you. Since they were just here, I was gonna say one other thing. They have a spot on their website where you can report city lights if they're down. It's really helpful to Mark's crew. If you guys see a city light that's down, Alliance changes the bulbs and all those. And you can report it right on their website if you go to Alliance's website. So if you guys happen to be out and about and you identify one, It's just a nice kind gesture of
City.
Manually filling it out um, here at city hall, so. Just triggered for, from them. Yeah, we could certainly work on that as we improve some of our online stuff in the coming weeks, hopefully. Okay. Uh, community center. Kyra, you're here representing the building committee, I know.
Um, I don't know if the owl's supposed to be tracking. But it's not.
It's got you.
Okay, all right. Uh, I'm Ryan Power Wolf, that's Tony and I chair the um, building committee for the community center and library. Um, just updating on where we're at with the project right now. We had a meeting with our architects on Friday. Um, at the H design in the morning. On, and they are gonna be helping us collect some community information via surveys about um, If needs have changed, I mean, we've been working at this project for some time and so it feels like it's, it's proven for us to Um, try to get a little bit more feedback from the community. We failed the bond very narrowly few times. Um, and we're contemplating that Third, third time that fast with that bond, so we want some more information from the public About the project, so they're gonna help construct surveys and get those out to folks here in town, so we can get more feedback from people. Um, and they're also gonna help um, Set up a couple of public meetings for people to come in like you are now, but for the purposes of learning more about that project. Um, we also have a rural development grant. Um, that's um, twenty thousand dollars. Um, council will approve a, a ten thousand dollar match to that. Which we are going to put towards continued design and, and energy network on the plan. Right now, because we've been at this, like our timing was pretty terrible starting a project like this. So we started right at the end of two thousand nineteen with design work and then COVID happened and then nothing happened for a couple of years. Um, we've been hard at work seeking donations and fundraising. We have approaching two million dollars that we've Set aside for the project right now, but that's not enough for it. Um, so we had a good conversation with the, the architects about what's, what's affordable, is it time for us to look at the project and see if there are ways that we can Make it a little bit more efficient, a little bit more cost effective. Potentially a little bit smaller and we're also with the approval of the council. Um, talking about rolling city offices into that building, so that then eventually this would be As well, so they will be coming um, for At least a meeting or two to sit down and sort of redraw, reframe. Um, set things up just a little bit differently, so we can share that information with people. Um, and creating, so, questions? Appreciate all the work. Thank you. Uh, the, the general rule of thumb right now uh, for cost per square foot is, is four hundred Dollars per square foot. Um, so Our current building is Between eighteen and nineteen thousand square feet. We know that's really probably not attainable For our size of city, so there would be four ways to, to keep the integrity of the plan, but Tighten it up a little bit.
Awesome. Thank you, Kyra. Thanks for the work and the time that you guys are spending.
Have to be a little careful about how I ask these questions. Uh, Obviously that's my wife. Uh, so Do we have to sanction the ten thousand dollar matching with the twenty? I, I don't know who makes that action.
In the past.
We had approved it in the past when we wrote the grant.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure that Karen doesn't overstep her bounds and.
That was my.
And then it'll come back again on the claims list, so.
Okay.
Second approval, second step of approval.
I'm still learning the ropes. I just wanna make sure that she's not violating some rule.
The sheriff was just here, so.
I'm gonna worry about rules in my house.
Awesome. Thank you for that update. Um, I'm gonna switch this around on you, Mark. Sorry. EMS, do you wanna go, Chad?
All right, so June or May, sorry, K, May. It was actually a light, light month for us. We, we appreciate it. Um, had a whopping six calls per month. It's now, I mean, ten calls from last year, ten calls from the month before, so. Uh, we'll, we'll take that as a win for us. Like those slower months Are much appreciated for my response. Uh, those, it'll be all at one. And uh, one later, so we had three calls total and maybe, maybe two of them. Uh, and we had one in Polk County area and then on Utray, all of the values over here. Um, other information, um, We got, very probably EMS station, we had, had meetings a couple of months ago, we there, we got together after our takeaways. Um, as far as upping our level of service to uh, conditional uh, advanced Um, work with the funds right now, to see how that agreement would look. And that's about all I'm working on right now.
I think it's important to point out Chad, obviously, hopefully everybody saw the, the presence during the EMS week. Um, he coordinated and orchestrated just a really nice uh, campaign throughout the week. Uh, one, recognizing and identifying team members with some bio stuff that was interesting. They purchased coffee on Friday morning or, or Wednesday morning. On a Wednesday morning, they purchased coffee at the public house for a while. Um, and I think everybody should just know, obviously that is Chad's after full-time job hours orchestrating and building a campaign and he'll be the first to attest. That's, it's not light work. It, it takes planning and organization and content and finding content, so. Appreciate those efforts and that, that was a really nice um, honor to the EMS team here and It, I know it takes you a lot of time, so I wanted to make sure to call out that, that was really good work and we appreciate it.
Thanks.
If you're not following them or not on Facebook, if you're on Facebook and not following them, I'd encourage you to follow them because they do share some of that information and it's a good way to stay informed. Uh, fire, Brett?
Yeah, everything's been good for us. Um, nothing wrong with me either, uh, except for some, we've had some vehicle maintenance, some upgrades and that sort of things. Other than that, we had our dad dance. Last weekend. They went close. Uh, it went great, so I know we're all appreciative of everybody supporting us. Um, definitely have recovered a lot of expenses that we're gonna have over Next year, let's get extra gear and, and that sort of thing, so. Other than that, that's it.
There was on our claim sheet, there was one which you can probably detail us, like eighteen hundred bucks for a fi- piece of fire. It was like to Carl emergency vehicles, that's some outfitting with some lights and stuff like that, I assume.
No, yeah. Yeah.
That's for the tanker.
Or, yeah, the tanker.
Yeah, that was, that was.
I didn't say so.
Could be the lot and so upgraded that, but, but.
Jane, Jane.
Where, where we take it, Mark?
Um, Jane. More call.
Oh, Sean Hill. Who's?
Jay Town.
Jay Town.
Yeah, so he gave us You know, basically no labor, did it for cost. Uh, That and then Carl giving us a big deal on lights, we're gonna put them on ourselves, so that bill, that way down.
Awesome. And then one of the things that we talked about early on was just replacing the jaws of life or the extrication. That's still in the plans or that's already been done or?
Kind of postponed a little bit to get some more information.
Okay.
We didn't want to.
Go by the first.
Yeah, you don't wanna jump to it, yeah.
But it's still in the.
We're gonna get a set of the, a new set of those.
We don't wanna be the power, but yet we also don't.
We, we are looking.
We we are looking at the battery operated ones.
Oh, yeah, okay, great, cuz that's kind of.
Yeah, so it's kinda doing some legwork to see, you know. Talk to the department, see what's what they're liking, what they're not, the ins and outs of of some.
Yeah, I just knew that was a big purchase that's on the radar, it's a significant cost, but a really valuable. Okay.
Where's where's this J-Town Auto that did this for? Not a Johnson, he lives in Shell Hall.
Yeah.
Um, Trevor, Christian soon, Christianson. They're right off.
No relationship.
We have a full house, something I wasn't really very well aware of. Our entire fire EMS is a hundred percent volunteer, and those guys work their butts off on our behalf, so. As always, my thanks for all the things you guys do, I would never have considered this till I retired, and you guys are employed and still doing all the work, so. My respect for that.
It does, you know, sure, Chad, with that story, but it does get, that stress you out, you know. It hasn't been doing its work, and then you gotta deal with that constantly again, and. On fire department and riots, not as bad. But it's still, it's still busy, yeah, so, thank you.
Awesome, alright, now Mark, Public Works update.
Alright, just a few things, uh. If you haven't noticed, uh, we finally got our parking lot back out of the complex, so. That's something we lost from ratio. Uh, the pool has been up and going, seems to be working well, um. I I don't know if everybody knows, but we we couldn't find any concession people. So, the pool staff is basically taking on the concession stand part of it, um, for during pool hours. Um, and I'm getting, we have a food truck that comes for JV and varsity home games, so, cool, that's a done deal. That seemed to work out really well, so, might be something, found something that we'll probably do next year. But that's. Concession stand is a. Big tackle for Jada and and that crew, so they've been doing a great job at that, so. For a week and a half or a weekend or whatever. That's the big things I got.
Couple questions.
Yep.
Um, the progress on the meltdown itself?
Uh, not right now, no. Got some ideas, but I haven't had a time to do nothing, so, cuz that hasn't, it's still on my radar.
Well, obviously, that will conflicted since it's a personal thing for me, uh, but.
Oh, still on my radar.
Okay.
And I've talked to J E O, another uh, engineering firm, so, got some different ideas from them.
Guys.
Yep.
But, I guess trying to represent the south side of town and depending on the winds along sometimes the north side of town also. Um, I think frustration levels are a little high, and so sooner would probably be better than later.
No, I'll do what I can.
Okay, is there anything we need to be doing with Schneider as far as how we engineered this and the fact that it's not working to spec?
I think it is working to spec, it, like, we've said this before, that this was not part of the process, the process is the lab. So, this was not a, this was kinda left out deal.
I've read enough of the contract, the contract says it will not affect quality of life and most things, you know, I think odor would definitely qualifies quality of life.
Well, impossible, yeah.
I guess we'll see where the the final bills are at, but if it starts to get in cost, I think we need to start looking at. What things we have in the contract and Jen, unfortunately, I still have your, the. Contract, but I haven't read very much of it, yes. So, if you're still missing a copy, I'm the culprit. Um, same topic, the. The EPA thing that Taylor you sent out, and there was a response in our packet tonight.
Yep.
I don't recognize all the jargon, did Schneider get that one resolved on our behalf, so it's.
They did.
Okay, that's what I thought I was reading here.
Or at least on the timeline that was requested by us, there will be, I assume, a response. Yep, yep.
This doesn't finish it?
No, okay, no.
Right, I was just trying to read it fast, it seemed like they were trying to address it.
That's to, to get to their twenty twentieth day, I guess, so, he's been in contact with them by phone plus this letter, so.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Alright, and. Uh, as we look forward in the fall, when we gotta redo the the rate, the meter flows with Shell Hall. We both got working meters now on our. Our sewer lines.
And ours should be fixed, we've had it issues with our flow, but ours. It's ours on the effluent, so not on the inflow.
Okay, I'll just nod like a dog in the back window, agree, but but we'll be able to monitor.
There's this one. There's this working, Shell Hall's is working, good, okay.
I just wanna make sure we can get that recalibrated and build correctly, and that way we just follow the contract that's. Alright, cool. That was it.
Yep.
I have my three.
Perfect. Nope, alright, Jen. Your opportunity.
Um, as you'll see, a little further down in the agenda, we are approving a new employee here in the office. Um, she starts tomorrow, after tonight's approval, um. The second thing on there that was written, I think we've already addressed through public comment with the noise complaints and parking issues, I just knew some people were coming. Um, and then another thing is, I'm hoping to set another meeting here in June to do another budget amendment. And to get some bills paid that need to get paid, um, in this fiscal year. Uh, I know Jen from the library has the bit, some bills, and her meeting is the twenty fourth, is that correct? June twenty fourth, Monday. So if we could do a meeting the twenty fifth. If every, anybody's, if they haven't, you guys available?
I can be there.
The Tuesday, it's a little odd.
You're retired, you can be there, Craig, right?
I think Jenny can look at me when she asks us.
You're retired.
So, yes, I should be.
Okay, June twenty fifth, same time, six P M, okay. Basically, it'll be budget amendment.
Perfect, six P M, so that'll be a special meeting. We'll have that posted, twenty fifth, Alan, did you get that? We're adding a meeting, I don't want you, I don't want you saying you missed a meeting, we're adding one on the twenty fifth.
That's right.
Yep, that's it for me.
Um, question, are we doing farmer's market, is that in process?
We are, yep. We have one tomorrow, it starts to start tomorrow, supposed to start last week, yeah, it was supposed to start last week, but with the weather, we canceled last week.
Okay.
So.
Right, so Tuesdays at?
Tuesdays from six to nine. We have uh, music already booked for every single week, it'll go for, it was, if you count up last week, it would have been nine weeks total, we're gonna go through August. Six, but skip the fourth of July week, so it's a total of nine weeks, so now we're down to eight.
Every Tuesday and.
Every Tuesday, six to nine P M.
The scoop going out soon?
Yes, I was kinda waiting for our last meeting, we just had last Friday with. Uh, the community center and library to maybe get some more information out about that in the scoop, so. So, delete it.
Marketing will be.
In the scoop, yeah.
And do you.
And more flyers and, yeah.
Okay, do you contact, you know, community club and. The friends of the public library and all those, so they can make whatever the deadline is.
Um, friends hasn't been on the list, but the library's always on the list, historical society, yeah.
Okay, and.
And reach out through emails to.
Do we flag local businesses that might have things, you know, I know already you're doing the party larger, I guess, you're doing car shows.
We've refrained from having businesses advertise.
Alright.
Just because.
Okay. But it did help just communication, and so that the other people on the street know when. So, I I can understand the the fine line here.
Yeah.
But, communication is always good.
Yeah, I think the, I think, um, one of the projects that we're wanting to put Danielle to work on is. Building out our city calendar that our website already has functionality for, at least on the core events that are occurring in town. And then giving a, you know, hopefully having a process established to where a business or an organization who's coming to town with an event. Can contact city call and city hall and be added to that calendar, so you'd actually have a resource where there was an updated citywide calendar, and then. Some of those things, uh, we obviously have required by law communications. And those have to be, obviously, take the number one priority, there's a lot of secondary communication gaps that, you know, Jen's that willing to admit to. And we obviously have recognized that are gonna get improved when we have a little bit of staffing support. Um, we'll go into Danielle in a little bit, but she brings a skill set from her library experience here that that works well with that, so it it will help us with some of that. That, um, and then expanding the scoop to, and in a perfect world, there'd be an electronic version of the scoop along with the hard copied version of the scoop. And if we need to revisit, what does the scoop look like, how should the scoop be, hopefully, we're gonna have that autonomy in the coming month, months. Um, to fix some of that communication based stuff, cuz I think we all agree it could be better and we want it to be more. Um, visible and and reachable to all different sources of people that gather, where they gather their information from.
Then last, I don't know if this is, how this came out, I've had some questions about something that happened with the sharks. Has that been resolved and is it things that we needed to cover or is it taken care of?
Yeah, we had a meeting with.
Okay.
Their president and.
Okay.
A board member and.
Alright.
As far as I know, I've been.
I subscribe, so all resolved?
Yep, I I believe, yes, I believe, I I do believe we're resolved unless there's something that Jen knows that I don't. We we made some accommodations and moved some things, uh, the Slater, the Ballard Sharks, Ballard Sharks, right, they've been using our pool for twenty some years. Um, we made some changes to put the AED in a more community-based space. Making sure our backboards in a more community-based space, so we made some adjustments like that. So that we could, they could have access to them, cuz they come and use our pool from like six forty-five, seven A M until nine A M, I think is what it is. So, just going through some logistics there, and then in the off-season, in our meeting with the Sharks, we talked about and discussed, we currently don't have really an. An active working operating agreement with them. And so, we're going to revamp and actually establish in this next off-season. Hey, this is our agreements, this is our protocol, and that way we have a governing document to report back to, it's just. You know, it's one of those things in a small town, it's just kinda gone the way it's gone for years, and as their organization has changed leaders. Um, and things change at the city, everybody kinda wonders why we do things the way we do, so. I've asked Jen and the Sharks to come, to come up with an agreement in the off-season that can be taxed, that controls. How we manage that partnership, um, it's obviously a great thing that we do, and we wanna have people using our pool, obviously, so. And Sue was at the meeting as well, so, we're all on the same page about a path forward, and I think everything's good, I talked to him on Friday morning, I drove down there. Um, and everything's good, going well.
Alright, if I have any questions, uh, Sue, any of you three.
Sue, Jen and I, yep.
Reflect, tell them to check with you guys.
Yep, Sarah, their board president, and I talk, have talked, so.
Alright, cool. That was it.
Have we heard anything on the software, new software? Quote, or?
I did get a quote, um. Like, yeah, that's one thing I forgot on here was, I did get a quote, we currently pay fifty four hundred dollars for our annual accounting software. The quote is for ten thousand nine hundred dollars to do the upgrade. So, I guess that's a question. Yeah, ten thousand nine hundred a year.
I remember Jen, I I sat on a meeting, Jen, uh, with the gentleman, what all, cuz they're moving from a locally based system to a online system. And it, did they expand the entire program, so instead of terminals, I don't remember what else included.
Yeah, it's not just an add-on, it actually upgrades the whole accounting system that I, that we currently have, um. So I guess, and it's going to add the functionality of when people do an uh, uh. Credit card payment online, it'll post it directly to our accounting program, instead of us having to manually print off a receipt. And then manually entering payment like we, like it's cash or check, um.
It creates an online portal, there'd be like a portal for people that could go paperless on their billing, for those of you that don't know. We send out over five hundred water bills a month, the post office is moving the postage on those to sixty, around sixty cents, I'm told, and their next.
Yeah.
Change.
Yeah, and currently we have about fifty percent of the people who do our A C H already, so if those people who are already doing A C H are comfortable getting an electronic bill. And not a physical, then it saves. Saves about half in postage and half in paper and half in. A little bit of time to sort them and.
And Sue was kind enough to work in here, just giving more context to this as an investigation on cost savings from dollars in the postage. But from time, raw time that we're using, Sue worked here last Monday. And Sue can tell you, we print them off on a eight by ten piece of paper. We tear, we have perforated edges and tear one side off, split three bills into single bills. And have to do that for six hundred, what, five hundred and some water bills. It's a time-consuming process, it's, there's waste associated with it, and it's just, at what point do we move to an electronic process that then also. We can eliminate the like auto auto pay folks, we can also then reduce the waste there, reduce the time doing it, but then on the backend as a customer. You can just log in online, see your payment, see what your usage is, do it that way. So, go, uh, in the back, there.
Excuse me, we pay automatically, but we still get like a statement each month, is there a way for us to opt out of that?
Yeah, that will be, yeah, that will be one of the options, that each individual customer will be able to either get it electronically or still get it. A physical bill.
Not today, you can't opt out.
No, not today.
And and this is still in the planning phase, so we don't know a lot of, you can't yet.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we're hoping to up our game so that, you know, we're more efficient, Alan, we save some money. Uh, so trying to just bring us online, be more efficient in all of our city operations, where we can, but we're just learning about this software, so.
And it's fairly new, I thought it'd have been around for a few years, and when we sat through the presentation, it was more like not, it's really much more new than.
Yep.
What they have delivered.
I think Jen, I agree, we don't mind being the second or third, we just don't want to be the first.
We're kind of attacking these things on a committee basis, right, so we're trying to get a council member in to support the staff to review it, look at it, make a good decision, but.
Is it cost-effective, that's something we'll have to consider, look at numbers.
We wanna be as efficient as we can be.
I, on that, I would look at, I would contact, I'm like, awesome, I would go ahead and have them give you references. Reach out to them and double check, because I went through probably seven software changes. In various companies I've worked for, and it is not fun, and if it's new and there's kinks in it, you will have a very angry.
Yep.
So, it's that I.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what he said, we we don't mind being the second or third, but not the first.
We'll do everything in our power to make it an easy transition, and we also understand a large portion of our town is not signing up for auto pay. The demographic of our town, there's just certain people that will never do that in their lifetime, so.
And it's, and it's both the citizens and city staff, if it screws up our records, then.
Yep.
Not good, so yes, we're definitely checking references and especially since it's new, so.
Yep, go ahead.
I guess it's supposed to, Greg, end the tip.
Craig.
We talked about, you know, you're covering up the connect fees, you know, there's people have ninety dollar water bills, sixty of them. Sixty of that dollars connect fee, and it's covered up in the bill, and the last time we talked, I think I got from you that you're gonna. Expose that, so they know what they're paying for, are we, are we still in reading with that, you're gonna put?
I will say we never, I I have never ever once given you an a firm affirmation of something I will execute. I have told you, I will, I ask the question, I'll try to find the answer as to why that's in there. My understanding is we disclose the disconnect, we disclose the connection fees publicly. Already, right, the water billing, the way the water billing prints, is that's lumped in.
It's the software combines it.
And then I wonder, cuz it's so quirky, you'll have to, they don't have meters, but they have connect fees, so some of your programs gotta put that in or to add that. Extra hundred fifty dollars or whatever it is on on the billing, so that takes a little bit special programming on the computer too. And the people I talked to, the one had, the ninety dollar water bill, sixty of it, she had no idea that. She thought that's just what it costs to do business, and it's not, and people need to know that those connect fees go to, to supply them. Water for the new uh, severs over here, they need to know that.
Well, move on. Yep, certainly. Did you have anything else, Jen?
No.
Alright, I, I don't have any specific updates. Obviously you can tell we've got a lot going on. We got long agendas. We're digging into everything, trying to. Improve a lot of things, um, and, and build on the good things that we're already doing. So. We'll move into the, the old business section here really quick, um. We have resolution thirty-nine, um, that Alan's gracefully led us into. This is the accepting of the updated plat sup- uh, submittal. From the Severs Light Industrial Park. Um, we have already approved one final plat, but there was an adjustment that was made. Um, Scott has determined that he would like to. Uh, pave the street out there. At first the street was presented to us as gravel. Um, and there was.
Private drive.
And a private drive. There's been some pressure and push, um, to make that a paved road as it's going to access a couple lots. It makes lots more sellable. He has gone back and has amended bolt to paving that street. It adjusted the plat map because he's now got a street that goes down it, that's, uh, concrete. And then he also has a turnaround at the end of that street. So. Everybody up here has a copy, um, essentially it's very basic and I believe there's probably, we probably have a copy or something similar out here. But essentially he's adding a, he's adding a turnaround here at the end of this lot. And so that adjusts the plat map, which then causes us to have to. Approve it again. And so he can file it with the county. So we can start selling, he can start selling some of these lots.
Okay, I have a question.
Yep, okay, as long as it's not about connecting.
My understanding that the city only paid for the water line to the lot. And we did not pay for anything.
That's exactly right. Yep. And that information is available to you right here in the plan.
Okay, the second one I, I have is some of that went underwater a couple of weeks ago. Is there any, anything for, um. Uh, what's retention ponds and that or?
When, when you say some of it went underwater, I, I was out, I've been out there multiple times. I haven't seen any of this proposed project underwater.
Some places where it was underwater, right here.
I think you're, you're talking.
I think you're closer to Sheldon, which is not going to be developed. Um, at this time, there is not a, there is not a, that's a fine question, the runoff question. Thanks to Mark and Jen is a question that's been asked. We sat at the table with the engineer that. Designed the, the water plans and as well as the runoff. He showed us, uh, would it be a topography map that showed the topography of that land? The ninety percent of that land or s- more than seventy-five percent of that land runs to the southwest. So the natural runoff is going to run southwest. A small portion will run east. When this was the.
Where?
To the ditch and then it flows on its natural contour to its, to its ending place.
If you're putting concrete down now, you know, they don't soak up water.
Yep, exactly. And so if I can finish the thought. The lots were designed in a sizable manner to where each individual lot holder will be responsible for addressing their own individual. Water retention. Um, we're talking lots that are, you know, three, four, five acres.
Seven.
Um, seven acres. So. The way that the engineer and he sat at a table with Craig, Jen, myself, Mark. And Mary Grace and Scott Severs were both present as well, as well as his attorney, um, and. They will, and we as a city with safe building will enforce that the runoff is addressed with the individual lot owners through the permitting process and the building process, permit process. But the natural contour of it, we were pleased to see the map explaining the natural contour. Our biggest concern was about it running to the east, right into our housing developments on Trail Drive. The natural contour is, is not going to be altered by, by this development. In fact, it may help in some instances as some of those lots deal with the retention. So we have been thorough, we, hold on a second, Alan, hold on, Alan. We have been very thorough on this. We've investigated this. We've contracted and used engineers to do all of this. We haven't. Just, we haven't marked it out and got the tractors out to build the development. This is methodical. We've done our homework. We have the engineers. Okay, so essentially we're approving the new plat map at this point, um. So that it can be filed with the county so we can move forward. So if there's a motion or if there's any other question. Okay, okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Anybody abstaining? Nope. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, resolution forty, pay application number one for Keller water and sewer expansion for light.
Either the question.
To Severs and Mr. Park. Yep, on the last resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
Relate, not changing it, uh, just with ours, the council, we're working on tip on that one, correct?
Yes.
And.
Yep. We're waiting on some final numbers from Scott in order to. Have the attorney look at what a TIF agreement would look like for this, the paving of the street.
Do you know what order it has to be done in?
We, we're. We want, I want to get the paperwork done and moving quicker than before. We're getting too much concrete into the ground or on the ground.
Yeah.
So that is a priority of mine, um, and I've expressed that to Jen and she's agreed to.
Right.
Apply.
I mean, there's not a, it's not like, once you, once you move a bulldozer, the tip isn't eligible. It's, it's eligible.
It's still eligible as long as council proves it.
That's my only concern.
Yep.
As long as council proves it, yes.
In a perfect world, we'll have her done before he has the road going in, if we can, and we'll push for that. So this is for the Keller water sewer expansion. Everybody's seen Keller out there. They've seen the signs. They've seen the road work. But right now they currently have whatever street to the co-op is. I can't.
Five hundred.
Five hundredth is closed at the moment as they prepare to go underneath two ten.
They're under.
They're under. So that'll be opening up in the coming week or two weeks. Okay.
Um. We did not get the paperwork, so.
He did not send it to us?
He did not.
Okay, so can we have a motion to table that then?
Move table, wasn't it forty?
Can I have a second? Ten second. All those in favor of table, lean, resolution number forty? Opposed? Anybody abstaining? Alright, so some new business, um, we'll move into that. Uh, discussion and consideration of resolution forty-one. This is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Economic Development Grant for Stepping Stone Daycare. Uh, Liz is here in the back. This has been a topic on many city council agendas over the last couple of years, so. Um, essentially Liz, um, and I have talked, Liz has met with, uh, Jen. We've met with Story County Economic Development. We've met with Liz's banker. Uh, Liz has been in pursuit of opening a daycare in Slater for multiple years now. Um, and we have officially, officially gotten to the finish line. Yes.
We hope.
Um, so what's, what's being discussed here through our economic development is a grant of thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, that grant is going to be, um. Considered and reviewed by Story County in the equal amount. And that. We believe from her banker is. Suffices all needs and they can start construction in the coming months. Um, obviously anything with banking, there's a protocol that's going to have to take place inside of their bank. Um, with their credit officers and their committee, um, but it apparently has been a preliminary review and. And we've, we feel that they're at the point, right?
And they gave her the blessing to put together, um, like a preliminary contingent, I believe it, so. I have a, I have a portion of the bridge that I have a gap, which I've done. And then we have a cash gap is where, is kind of where we're at, that we have the bridge. So once those pieces are in place. Then she can move forward with collecting everything to put, um. Put all the documents together to push for approval for a loan committee through the bank. And then it would also be submitted to the SBA.
So a couple of the things that, uh, are important in this, um. Uh, Liz will be moving into an empty commercial space that's in town here. I don't know if you're disclosing that or. Okay. Um, but one of the things that, uh. Was important to me, I guess, in talking with Liz is I wanted to put some parameters around this. One thing I think that's happened in the past is. You always, you always try to operate with, um, the best in. In your heart, but sometimes your mind knows you need to protect the city and the taxpayers' funds and that. So I've talked to Liz about, you know. Offering this grant or approving this resolution in a format that requires the county to step up in their portion. That this isn't open, that this is not on the table if the county's not on the table and a timeline of some sorts related to. When, when construction starts, when business opens, so, um. I don't know at the moment. I know we have the conditional portion in here regarding, um, Story County. Uh, but I do think that's something that we should discuss, council should discuss here in terms of how they want that wording to be if they are in agreement to it. Et cetera. I want to make sure we put some, some teeth in it that protect us in the event that it doesn't come through. Um, which obviously we hope it does.
My easy suggestion is the project reporting. Is actually part of the project enforcement. Rather than just reporting, right now, it only says that they'll do it, but no details. The project reporting, I would prefer to have this contingent of, that project reporting is completed. Not that we have, we have to wait till that, if we can reclaim the money, if those projects. Parameters, um, I'm looking for the second sheet.
Okay, yeah.
There's A through E on page one.
Okay.
Under section three. If we said that those things have to be completed, so employees working the business. Uh, and if those parameters aren't met, then we would have the right to reclaim thirty-five thousand.
So, yep, so, uh, basically here that, um. The pro- project reporting for the sake of everybody's, it's in the room, Umlan shall report city of Slater, report and update, report. Umlan shall update city of Slater in writing as the following benchmarks are met. The lease agreement signed. Fifty percent of renovations are completed, a hundred percent of construction is completed. Um, the first day of operation and that there's a minimum of fifty children or students enrolled and that there's ten employees employed inside of the facility. Is there a timeline that we need to tie to that?
Given some of our past, um, non-activity and, and. Um, support that we've given. I think a timeline that Liz agrees is, is doable and is reasonable. Would not be bad.
I agree, so we'll end up with a.
Yeah.
And similarly, the fifty children and ten employees over what period of time, I mean.
I think that's the question.
Same thing.
Yep, yeah, no, I, I think in the town would like to see that too, or they would know that you're, they were using their money wisely. But I think.
Is there, is there a point at which? Dollars would have to be expended to you? Does it have to be?
The bank just seems.
Or just committed, so this, so the resolution could be the commitment.
We could pay one hundred percent completion.
Yeah.
And is your understanding?
The cash is supposed to be spent up before we can draw on the loan. That's how that. That cash piece of it works. So everything in grant funding that I've received so far, anything that I put in, um. And then whatever comes. With this, with this request and those requests from the county, that money all has to be spent first. Before I can draw any loan funds. But in order to move forward with the bank, they just need a letter that says. You've approved this grant. She can move forward on her end. The cap, I don't have to show the cash there immediately. I don't know how quickly she would want to see that. I mean. I would have to ask her on that. I just know she said, all I need is a letter from them. It says, yes, you've approved this grant, this grant and this amount. For person with gold, for.
But that money gets spent before you start drawing on the loan money.
Yes, the cash will get spent up for.
Um, what would make sense to me is I'm looking at this, the city of Slater Business Incentive Program. Statement that we have here, I would just put in, um, I would refine point four B, I would be called.
Right.
Um, to include some of the parameters up in project reporting and I would do that at a timeline that Liz feels is. Doable and acceptable to her. Um.
Yeah, you just put the. If within twelve months or if within eighteen months. Yeah, eh, but you're saying you're putting the time quo- you're quantifying the time there.
Uh, approving, approving the money tonight and, um. Then we could refine, after you spoke to your banker, maybe at our meeting at the end of June, we could. Um, refine the agreement, the pro-business incentive program in it. At our next meeting. How does that sound?
Well, and even if the, like you said, four B. Uh, if we start with, for instance, a date, just as a suggestion of how we go about this, that those five points from three then. Um, so if the timeline had to be moved back, we could later approve that and it would move back all of. Three, A through E. Commensurate with, you know, with, at the same rate that we started at, that the. Lease agreement.
So you want a date on each.
Well, I think, I think, I just think if there was a date with, with four B, that, and we at some point decide, well, yeah. Covid hit again and we need to move it back six months. All of those things just automatically get moved six months. We don't have to visit. We don't have to revisit three A, three B, set a date for each one of those. Does that make sense? But again, whoever's going to work for you, because that's what, that's the whole ultimate goal of it.
I don't disagree with that, but just like anything, right? If we just set a date in letter B.
Yeah.
There's nothing to say that we can't come back if Covid hits and we can't say.
We're extending.
We're reviewing this and we're choosing not to consider you as default. We're considering to offer an extension, right?
Right.
We could essentially.
I'd just say that would then move all of.
Yeah.
Conditions in three back by that same amount of time, rather than set dates for. You know, win fifty percent and then win a hundred percent is, but they just be.
And I think, I think what we're saying is we just state the date in letter B, the final date of when everything's done. We don't care at what. Progress A, B, C, D, E, F is, we're just by this point one year from now.
Ken, I agree. Uh, what I said about three, ignore that. And yeah, as long as we put something for a completion dated for B, what Sue said. I'm good with that.
Just a completion date.
Yep. Is that worth, I'm just trying to make it simpler, so there's.
And I heard from the county today, the supervisors have a new grant, grant in the county they want to funnel you into. If that's grant doesn't work, then I've got the unofficial. Though, okay, so we're on the same page.
I was looking for the agenda that I was going to be on there, doing it tomorrow, pending. For the same request, can you city of for tonight, that I'm not.
You're not on the supervisor's agenda for tomorrow.
Right, it's supposed to be bringing up to speed. And I said, well, can you let me know?
Two weeks from now, I think.
They meet every Tuesday.
Yeah.
So the.
And I think it was two weeks from now is when you'll be on.
Okay.
I mean, as far as getting everything submitted.
So I think the first question at hand really is, is everybody supportive of offering? Grant thirty-five thousand dollars in additional grant money. To this project.
Has the first grant been expanded?
No. Some of it, and I have all the receipts that I can bring, I can bring in for them to have. I've checked back of what I've used to cash holder or what I've used grant money for, anyone talking, I should need these. Things like that, that I've had to pay for, huh? But no, I have not used all of the city and county grant money.
So then I think the question is. If we pick a date here today. What would be a reasonable date if you're on the spot right now to say when you think you'll be. Operating at that fifth, let's just say you'd be a hundred percent completed, you're opening and you have your fifty kids.
Well, um. Everything goes. Without any hiccups when we're going through the bank process. My banker has said she would like to see approval sometime in July. Um, so then I spoke with architects. I am not engaging architects or construction drawings fully applicable this time, like I did when they were, um, going to go brand new. Because I can no longer use any of that expense towards this. Change in projects, um, but anyways, I spoke with him, it'll take them six to eight weeks to do. Construction drawings. So we get a favorable mid-July, best case scenario. Six to eight weeks, it would be mid-September-ish. So we could start construction between then and October one. I'm looking at at least, signing the lease hopefully August first. Lease commencement. I did not know that that was the difference. There was a difference between lease commencement and lease signing, but there is. And so I think we're going to shoot for October first lease commencement, so construction starting then. And we'll do, um, the school age building will be taught privately. And we'll do, um, the school age building will be taught privately. So that'll take eight weeks to complete, so we can open the school age space, be operating while the other spaces being remodelled for the younger kids. Would be, that's my goal, and I wanted to hit as close to school opening as possible, but it's just not. That won't happen that way, but I know like Christmas break, there's usually a uptick in people switching. Switching before and after school options, things like that, so hopefully according to December range of opening school age.
So would twelve months from construction start if we put you, so you have, you have your Christmas time period for your enrollments, but then you can hammer the summer enrollments? And so by October of twenty twenty-five, you should, you should be at your fifty kids. If you're not at your fifty kids, we probably have bigger problems.
Yeah, yeah, if I'm not at fifty kids, within a year, I'm ready.
October twenty twenty-five. And if something were to change with financing or something in the meantime. Obviously, you'd let us know, we could look at that and consider the circumstances, but I, I feel like we could set October first twenty twenty-five as a timeline. Um, we're pretty amicable with here, I think, but I do think it protects us.
A, a question referring to Ken's comment about we could move it back. Would you have any concerns with June thirtieth, so we keep it in the fiscal year? Or June thirtieth too soon? Of twenty twenty-five?
Um, doesn't affect our fiscal year at all. Doesn't need to do it.
Okay, I was just thinking we could close the books and have that one done, okay?
It, this will go, this, this is set to be on twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four books, not twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. The reason I didn't elect for that is because with young kids, I know that summer is a moving time. And so when school starts back up, that's a time when you're like, you'd make transitions like that and you'd have a clean break when kids go back to school, you maybe make that move potentially.
So your goal is to have the school age kids up and running by January when they start back to school?
January twenty-five.
Right.
Or, or, or earlier. If we can start construction like October first, we'll say, or be very beginning of October, it's, we build out, so.
Right.
Hopefully, I mean, this is up for some time.
And then, is there a ballpark number of, of your younger kids' buildings?
I would have a.
Another six months or?
I think it's, I want to say we have another sixteen week bill, I think, um.
To be up and running, hopefully, if everything goes well by summer.
Yeah.
For that, yeah, October should give you a, that three-month cushion of things that are gonna go wrong.
So how do you want to change that wording to October first twenty twenty-five if that's acceptable?
I have this, a first draft of rating, if I can include that in my motion.
Yes. Are you ready, Jen?
I moved to approve, I have this written down, I'll share with Jen, um, approve resolution forty-one. Do we need to have the caveats in this, or can we approve resolution forty-one as it is? And then.
In the resolution, we want to have those in the resolution, because one thing that I've noticed with John Washington's lot and that is we didn't have it in the actual resolution. I think we want it in the resolution for future.
Be the statement. Um, if at any point in time, this aforementioned childcare facility does not get completed. And if project recording benchmarks are not met by October one, twenty twenty-five. One hundred percent of money's advance must be returned to the city of Slater.
Dot, 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 continuing the paragraph, yep.
Oh, second thought.
Okay, all those in favor to resolution forty-one, and as spoke by Sue. To be amended or typed by Jen. All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Nope, okay. We'll move on to the next section here. We have the public hearing on budget amendment number two for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. But twenty twenty-four, um, this amendment, it's right here, right? Yeah. And the amendment specifically, can you call that out?
Oh, yeah, I mean. Let me get there.
Yep. No problem.
Um, so the first one you're seeing for, let's see. So TIF revenues, that's to make payment to Roger Enterprises. Um. Yeah, that's the, yeah. One thirteen, uh, license and permits is to balance us out for building inspections. For income. So a total of an extra one hundred and sixty-six dollars. So then when we get to the expenditures, public safety, that's all fifty-three, five is all in. Licenses and permits, which is building permits. So those, uh, cancel each other out. The culture and recreation. Um, was the historical society for twenty-five hundred dollars, um, because we. FY, yeah, FY twenty-three was not paid, but budgeted. Um, so we paid it in this fiscal year, so that adjusts that. Um. Community and economic development. There's some TIF payments for sixty thousand dollars. Plus, we updated our code for twenty-four hundred dollars. So that's where we get this sixty-two thousand four hundred. Mine item twenty-one, general government. Um. There's some Kelly income that we only budgeted nineteen instead of twenty-five. Um. Um. Our insurance, um, our property insurance. Jump significantly by more than twenty-five percent, um, so we actually overexpend, uh. Had more, twenty-four thousand four hundred fifty. To add to that. Um, yeah, Kelly, we had originally only budgeted nineteen thousand as income, or.
Secondly, hours.
I think from what you had said earlier, we have to report when we're.
So, yeah, so our hours are.
Yeah.
But if we have more income, we don't have to report it, it's when we got less income.
Less income or, yeah.
So we don't have.
But we had only budgeted nineteen thousand for expenditures to Kelly for hours, um, and I don't know why. We would have done that when there's, when we have twenty-five thousand coming in in income, so we have to adjust the expenditure end of it so that we spend it what we have. Coming in.
What makes sense, what's the, uh, business type in the enterprise?
That's. That's the sewer. Yep, so that's, so that's Keller. And I just budgeted the, I wasn't sure what their first payout was going to be, how much? So that's budgeted all of water at this point, since that's what we approved to move forward. None of that is sewer yet, so.
Answered my questions, Ken, looks like you were still like reading.
No, I, yeah, I am, but it's, it's, no, I'm good.
Sue, anything?
Yeah, nothing.
All right, so then, uh, if there isn't any more questions, thanks for walking through that. Um, then we'll take a motion to approve that resolution, um, oh, that's just a public hearing. So if there was any comments.
Any, want to ask the public.
Does anybody have any questions about that amendment?
Then obviously you guys can't see what we're looking at, um, we adjusted the total budget by a hundred eighty-five thousand.
This is actually, this is actually what, um, is posted in the newspaper, published in the newspaper. So all the public who ever seen in the newspaper should see that page. Uh, the Tri County Times. Abe's Tribune, Abe's Tribune. Sorry.
There's a good chance in the near future, we'll get it on our social media or our Facebook. And our website, um, we've discussed a little bit about getting our packets out there as well. So we, we want them to get that better, we just need Danielle to get in here to help us out.
We have to close.
Yeah.
Move, we close.
Yeah. We need to open it. I didn't open it. Rookie mistake. I'd like to, I'd like to. Open the public hearing at seven forty-six. While we're clarifying questions, now we need to let the public have the hearing, so move second to open the hearing. Second, Craig second, all those in favor of opening the public hearing on the budget amendment, number two, all those opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, the public hearing's open, seven forty-six PM. Does the public have any questions about the information just discussed? Perfect, then, hearing, no comments here.
I need to make the statement that you didn't receive any comments or questions.
Yep.
Prior to this evening's public hearing.
So seeing no comments and hearing we have not received any via text, can we close the public hearing? A motion to close, seven forty-seven, a second. Ken first, Craig second, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Nope, wonderful. Let's move to resolution forty-three, um, professional service. You're right, thank you.
We approve resolution forty-two.
All those in favor? Opposed? All right, is anybody abstaining? No, okay, that is the, that is an amendment that's good to be behind me. It was not good to me. Now, can we go to resolution forty-three? Professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates for engineering, topography, survey, ballfield layout and construction staking for phase one of Trailside Park Sports Complex. Mark, I know we have a loose design, um, the week we're here, obviously, during the duly weeks donated the ground to the city. We've got a little bit of a parking lot, we're finally moving a step forward in the engineering.
Yep.
Can you give just, uh, the design? We probably have a copy of it. Um, somewhere.
There was one out there.
Now, can you give an example or can you walk us through what's?
We're looking at a four, like a cloverleaf complex, uh, softball, baseball complex. With a full-size soccer field. That could be split up into numerous, uh, depends on age, um. The parking lot is roughly, I think, two hundred by four hundred right now, um, with. I think we do have projected to go a little bit bigger than that, um, and then some sidewalks will be from the parking lot to. Said ballfields plus the High Tressel Trail. So. That's kind of the gist.
So on the far west side of the lot, you know, there'll be a retention pond on the far west side eventually. Um, there will be four dime, four fields in a clover pattern, like Mark said. Um, with some seating in between eventually and, uh, concrete between all four, and so you could have four games going on at one time in opposite directions.
Eventually, one building with a, that would house concession stand bathrooms, um. Main shed, just all in one, under one roof, same though, so, in a kind of a centrally located place.
Full of relief or just.
No, actually, between the soccer field and.
Okay, I've seen it both ways.
So then, just because it's gonna house everything. Yeah, it, it'd be for probably a drag and, you know, whatever.
And that is not this phase of what being designed, this will be a phase.
We're really hoping to get at least two ball diamonds, um, and the soccer field to a playable club. Right now, so, and everything staked.
And the soccer field would sit south of the current parking lot, okay, and run east to west and then broken into various fields.
Yep. Or however they would decide they need him, I guess, to the soccer club, for people.
You guys graciously gave the land. Is this fall in a little bit of the scope of what you were thinking?
Yeah, yeah.
Kids, okay.
And there would, there is projected a playground down the road, you know, so.
Trail running through it.
Yep.
To get to the parking lot and to get to the High Tressel Trail. And hopefully to connect the housing development as well.
So essentially what will be executed here is they'll go out, they'll stake what the ballfield are gonna look like, they'll stake what the softball field's gonna look like, they'll talk to us about grading. Yep. Fencing, and then the plan has been to obviously search in kind, what we can capture and Mark obviously is an in kind.
Yeah.
Beggar. And so what we can gather in kind, and then we've obviously pledged more money from this year's rollover funds. Um, and next year's rollover funds. Twenty.
Twenty-fives.
Twenty-five rollover funds in the amount around eighty thousand pledged towards this project on top of what's been kind of set aside. So we think we have around three hundred thousand or somewhere in there.
So, yeah.
Set aside, and so the hopes is we can get a ballfield out there and continue to help. Um, people see the vision of what's gonna be there and help build the lots and get more houses out there. This is the dream, or the objective. And then hopefully, once see, people see project, uh, progress, we can incentivize more people to contribute towards the project. What's that word for you, Alan? Exactly. We like, we like it that way if we can.
Taylor, you talked about partners, are we, you can't really look on. Moving forward with that or?
Partners.
Oh, can you elaborate? Partners. Yeah, so I, I'll just say this. I, uh, because I've been working with Story County Economic Development, this resource they've dedicated to us. I've asked, he meets and supports, they contractually support Huxley. I've asked for if they would consider and have a conversation with the city of Huxley, because if anybody that's in the district knows. There's a shortage in ballfields for the kids that are in our little leagues, and now you have a club team, club program that's really growing. So there's just an overall sho- shortage for fields. So there's apparently in other towns like ours with the situation we have, where the schools shared among towns. There have been agreements negotiated where the surrounding towns will. Agree to support this project instead of constructing and developing a competing project. Um, and so I had asked if they, if they would, he would broach that topic and ask that question of Huxley and consider if there's any feasibility. To some sort of arrangement where we could work with them to make sure that we're building the outdoor ballfield park and that we can partner and. Use those fields together instead of them building a giant outdoor, outdoor ballfield park, and they could focus on a different. Area, um, and there's some vision or desire to develop, uh, maybe an indoor field house or something. I know some people have speculated about over there, so. Um, really, at this point, it's a conversation around. Hey, we're gonna build this, would you contribute to it? Yes, no, if you're not gonna contribute, would you at least pledge that you're gonna support this? Um, with your programs there, so. It may turn out to be absolutely nothing, but I think being a good neighbor and being a good steward of the district. It makes sense to at least let them know we're building something and see whether. It fits and aligns, we're obviously down the road and so, and that kind of trifolds into what we're trying to do with the Nighthawk Field and the way we wanna. You know, Mark's talking about some improvements, we're waiting on a meeting back from, um, the superintendent to sit down and try to talk about. A lo- a, a true agreement, a long-term agreement that could help us partner and retain the baseball field for decades to come. And what improvements have to occur for us to be able to achieve something like that, because. In today's day and age, all these ballfields in surrounding towns and communities and they just keep getting nicer and better and fancier. So I think there's a desire for some updates to our field, and so what, we're trying to quantify what those are, and then quantify if. We can get an agreement in place to ensure that the baseball team, the Ballard Bombers will continue to play their varsity games in Slater, JV games. In Slater on that field.
To work with both Ballard and city of Huxley.
Trying.
Trying, yeah.
Yeah.
Working with no guarantees.
And Slater's always had a very, my understanding is, is a very focused little league first mentality. It's the little leagues, we want to make sure I have access to it. Um, but there's also a Ball, a Ballard baseball club too, that we can have conversations with both parties and support the parties if we can. Negotiate that and make sense of it, it would be better to see the ballfields used. Um, than to build the ballfields and not be used, and we know there's demand, it's just quantifying it and arranging how it works is the challenge.
Last question. The visioning thing, we had something, kind of the Mark's triangle. Are the ways to combine those two efforts or so, since apparently close to each other or they're just too far apart and divorced. There were, there, there was in this.
Yeah, I was on the project, I was on that committee, um.
Yeah.
That was the committee that really.
Two restrooms, two, 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 it's.
Sucked me into this volunteering thing, um. We had designed an outdoor amphitheater concession stand, restrooms, bike, additional parking, golf cart parking. Bike racks, and it was, it's in the triangle, Mark's triangle is the city dump lot that V's and goes Heart of Iowa Nature Trail, High Tressel Trail. I think it'd be my desire to see that, not a dump lot in the future, so, um. I don't think the purpose or the scope of what we designed there. Will fit on that land, I think when you see the map, I think by the time we get a full soccer field on there. With the parking lot and with four ballfields and a clover. with the parking lot and with four ballfields and a clover shade, I am imagining and we'll see, we'll see the staking. But I'm imagining we're probably getting fairly tight on space and then you do some concrete.
Plus down some green space.
And then a building, a, a structure to have restrooms, concessions, whatever we need to have.
And, and you put trees there, you, you, you're gonna eat up some spots that way.
I was just wanting to add that we did duplicate things.
Yeah, certainly. I think that community visioning plan was a, a good one. I think it's a we need to incorporate when we redo our capital improvement plan. When we can find new land to move the dump lot from where it exists away, because I don't think there's a lot of resistance to that outside of location. Wha- what's the alternative location? And, and we are working on, Parks and Rec is working on a screen to screen that west side of the dump lot. And they should be coming to us with a proposal of if there's additional funds needed, but we would have a welcome to Slater windscreen like on the baseball field that says Ballard Bomber, Homo Ballard Bombers, whatever that's on the tennis courts in Huxley. We've asked them to design and come up with a comparable to wrap around that dump lot to say welcome to Slater and cover the dump lot versus it just being the open dump lot. But as soon as we can get land to move the dump lot, we'll figure that out and see what we can do.
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure that we were looking at both projects and.
Yeah.
I can't figure out how to combine it, but maybe somebody smarter me could.
Yep. Questions on that?
Couple of questions.
When we get back to the
contract, mega contract, that's kind of where we're at, right?
Yeah, we're on resolution forty three, professional services is what we're agreeing.
So I read through this topographic site survey, there's, um, what's not included was what caught my eye, private utility locates are not part of this service.
There's something out there.
Okay.
They can like help be gas line.
Gas line.
Anything.
We would have on it.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, but we have never been anything out, so there can't, there's just drainage out there.
Right.
That we've.
Right. And then boundary verification survey is not included, let's see, I mean.
I would, I don't.
Um. Okay.
That's just the lot.
The lotting of the lot.
That's the lot size.
Yeah.
Is there pins out there?
We can't.
Yeah.
There's pins out there so we can locate boundary ourselves.
We kind of need to know that for your state, the.
No, I just, it just catches my eye what they, what's not included because those become change orders that end up costing.
Money, yeah, yeah, but we should be able to define our boundary.
Chiseled under, but oh, a few of them are there. The main ones. Um. And then my question's answered, not here anybody else. I'm gonna move, we approve resolution forty three, professional services to Snyder.
This includes staking it all out, right?
Yes.
Or voting.
Robust staking, this isn't, this isn't gonna be a flat or.
They're not even, no, it, it's.
It's not a final, just, yeah.
Okay.
Just so we can look at.
I'm just hesitant to approve the final design if we haven't actually seen.
This isn't a final, there, no, there's nowhere near.
Well, and this includes some of that, I mean.
There's not gonna be a final.
Not a final plan, it's a.
It, cause we're gonna do a lot of them, we're, we're gonna be the general and then the whole thing.
Okay. This is taking. Can we get a copy of what they're doing so we at least understand?
The map, you're saying the design?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, we have that.
I think you guys still have a website.
Yeah.
I think it's altered. I think there's a design of it.
Cause the first, yeah, cause the first one is, yeah, uh. There's the site survey.
We had to.
Plan update.
Phase somewhere, so.
Item two was plan updates.
Okay.
They're gonna update the plan a little bit.
I guess I'm.
As part of this cost.
But I guess I'll say yes, but I really like to see that. I like to undergo a vote.
Yeah. I, I saw mine, I saw, I know there's a copy of mine that I got. I can't remember if it's Jen or if it was in the manu, in the book before.
Yeah.
Uh, me.
Do you have it? You got a motion, it's like, move on.
I had it here, I was gonna show it to you quick, but I don't. I do have an ease mine anytime. Um, okay, so we had a motion from Ken, a second from Sue. We are looking for all those that approve.
Hi.
Oppose, all those opposed, and anybody that abstains. Perfect, that carries unanimously, so we'll move in to the next phase, which is, uh, the discussion, possible approval of city offices being closed July. Uh, this is a question I asked really quick, um. Obviously, private sector based. A lot of times when a holiday falls on a Thursday, the office closes Friday, vice versa, so I asked the question about if, um. I, if it's ever been done before, have we ever, you know, we give the holidays, so then do we, we obviously have staff that has to be responsive around and capable of addressing the things that need to be executed in order for the fourth of July to occur. But have we ever decided to just close the office, close the city for that day? Um. For the employees to be kind, assuming business is taken care of, obviously, I, I don't wanna be too loose in the sense that it's checkout and go home. Um, but I've asked, I've talked to Mark about it, I've talked to Jen about it a little bit. You know, there's a few little things maybe that, um, we can address to make sure we just take care of, um, after the parade or that on the fourth, but I think if we take care of those things, I think it would, I, I feel it'd be a kind gesture and I don't have very many large concerns about what goes wrong and what needs to be accomplished by the city workers on the fifth. Um, and then carries over the sixth and the seventh, obviously, and return on the eighth. So I kind of wanted to discuss that.
I think you'd be, I think you've got a lot of just little things, lost and found, picking up prizes that were won in the raffle. That will get moved back here and things like that. Most of that could be done, um, community club has access to this building, I think, so.
And they're kind of the chief executor, right, of our Fourth of July is the community club. And they see a lot of it through, you guys handle some logistics of road closure signs. The trash service, you know, that was another thing, are we gonna run into trash issues? That's all outsourced at the moment to garbage guys and they bring in the red cans.
My question, only question was, are you including pool in that closed as well?
I don't think so, I mean, they're.
I was not thinking pool in that.
Just to clarify.
Everything else?
They have access to here to get their computers and opening cash and stuff.
So how does that affect the city's staff? I assume somebody's supposed to check the water, somebody has to
Yeah.
monitor things at the pool. So what?
We have somebody in every day of the year, I mean, that.
Right.
Some people might not know that, but we have somebody that is
Three hundred and sixty.
Doing something every day of the year. Uh, for us, I mean, what?
I know that.
Yeah, so to me, I mean, it, it would kind of depend, maybe I bring a couple of people in on the fifth, if, if this happens. Um. We kind of go through a quick, you know, you're here for two or three hours and then you go. On the other hand, we all might come in for two or three hours and say we got things done. There, you're not gonna get a lot of stuff done anyway on the fifth because of the day after before, and we'll probably go home and use vacation till. So. To me, it isn't probably gonna matter much to my, me and my style, so.
We're really gifting a day, an approved day off, that's not in the current handbook or schedule of what we do, and I I don't know, I think it's a nice gesture, I think it takes a lot of work to keep the city up, and if it were me in the city job, I would have put my time off, and the timing of this for me is, if we're going to do this, then I wanna make sure the word gets out to the public that this city building is gonna be closed on the fifth, that we will be closed on the fourth and the fifth. Emergencies, we can communicate something about that on call, it's process.
That's no different than any other.
But we could throw that out there, you know, or whatever's needed, but are, is there concerns about logistics of other things that need to be accomplished on the fifth? Um. So, you know, Craig and I have had this discussion, the, the, you know, the road closed signs and some of those things, maybe we need to address those after the parade or, um, you know, get those taken care of to just get them moved out of lawns or something, um, which I haven't talked to Mark about, but I can help with that, um. But as far as other things that they're moving or cleaning up or adjusting. Imagine a street sweep after, um, that Monday or something.
Yeah. I don't even get the signs in the yard over the weekend's a big deal. Well, like I said, if, if two, two or even three, whatever come in, you can have them pulled in.
You could, yeah.
I applaud the motivation. I, I am a little more resistant, obviously, from earlier communication, um, that I, the sometimes messy state we leave the city on after the fourth, it'd be good to get it cleaned up immediately after on the fifth, instead of waiting till the following Monday, so. Uh, I'm not gonna fight it violently by any means, but, uh. I'm too used to agriculture, mother nature, I just care about who. Calendar days.
Yeah, so, yeah, and I've thought about that, you know, cause I do think it's important that we're keeping the town cleaning those things, and I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my, I'm trying to wrap my mind around those things that come up and the trash service obviously becomes the first biggest thing, but my speculation is, they won't pick up on the fifth, right?
No.
They're gonna pick up on the sixth or seventh, so we're not gonna change that outcome.
Yeah.
The one thing we could change is, I guess you could try to sweep, street sweep on the fifth, but you probably wouldn't do that based on traffic in and out. So I was just trying to wrap my minds around like what doesn't get done.
What I would do, what I would probably do on the fifth is probably pick up barricades, make sure the park is clean, walk through it, make sure it's you know, that there's nothing, that it's all in cans. Um.
Yeah.
And that's probably about it. As far as cleanup is all we would do on the, on that Friday. And then, and then our normal stuff. It's a lot of extra time hours that our whole staff puts in leading up to and, and cleaning up from the Fourth of July. Um, and it's kind of unique, I mean, we're not putting it in the handbook, they're already giving July fifth off for everybody every year to pick, no matter what date.
It was just a random act of thinking it's a chance when it falls the right way that it gives them a holiday weekend.
Considering the concept of people that have to work.
Yep.
As opposed to the people that don't.
Can you elaborate?
Are you paying them time?
Get off, what about people who work for the city that have to work? Are they overtime or the? It's, uh. Is this holiday pay, what? How you compensate?
Jen, are you open on the fifth? Do you have programming on that day?
How do you feel about? How do you feel about?
About being closed?
Just all ideas.
I mean, when we I, I, I guess the question is are you closing and asking the people who aren't working, are you giving them an extra holiday day, or are you asking them to use the vacation day to do it?
This is an extra holiday day is what I was thinking of it as. And I'm naive, like I said, this is a private sector, this is a total stepball idea.
Patrons that show up on the fifth, or do you think you'll have many patrons on the fifth that would show up and?
We'll probably be fairly busy that day just because we have a lot of family that are in town, lots of people that wanna come use wifi and computers and check email and things like that, or, um, have grandkids in town and stuff like that, so. Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we already voted on our calendar, we have some flexible holidays that you guys added. Um, you know, there are times that that happens to us, like if it's around Christmas or whatever, and force says, you know, you want another day, we just decide to use our vacation day, say, yes, we'll be closed that day if you. So I mean, I, I, you guys can do what you want, I totally think that the amount of time that City Hall has been putting in extra then in this case for this year, give them the day off, they deserve it, they've been putting in way more time, I don't think it, I don't feel like it's unfair to us, I think, but it's fine.
So you're saying you, you think the library, you would stay open as your schedule sits?
So that then raises the question initially posed, is there a compensation difference? Cause we're not applying it equally then. The alternative, I mean, we've heard is if we don't do this, Jen's already voiced that she'll, would like to use PTO on the fifth. Mark's voicing that Doug likely will use PTO on the fifth or some way to an extent.
Yeah.
I would think.
So I guess then it turns into what's the denial or approval process of ETO, so. It's just doing is it easier to not give the day and let them work through their time off schedule? And the gesture was discussed.
Yeah, I I kind of like the idea of letting them have it all. Um, I think until five to nine o'clock Friday night, you were still here?
Yeah, I delivered your packet at twelve thirty.
Oh, so that's why I didn't notice. But, yeah.
Typical Friday night.
Uh, before council.
Yeah, I hope I didn't scare anybody.
This was.
I thought it came in the morning.
Pretty long.
Um.
No, but reality is July fifth is Council Packet Week, so. Oh, probably be here anyway.
You just be working with the shades down.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Sort of sounds like it's a nice idea, but it's really.
Yeah, if that's the end of the discussion, that's the end of the discussion. I don't wanna drag it out, we get a whole other page. It was just a thought to discuss, so. Alright, thanks for the discussion. Thanks for the question.
Explain your question.
Thanks for the question, it was a good question, it was not, had not been thought about on my part. Uploading.
Flexible day.
Yeah. Okay, so this is an exciting one, the approval of, um, Danielle Wolf. Uh, Danielle comes to us via high recommendation from Janet at the library, she is working there as we, nope. Is it after eight? It's after eight, she's not there now, but she's typically working there on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays from four to seven. Um, she is an educator that is leaving education in the pursuit of a library career in a perfect world. We have the opportunity to, um, snag her, um, to work full-time for us in the offices here. Um, and then also help Jen cover some hours on those consistent days of Monday, Tuesdays and Thursdays, um, at the, at the onset. Um, so brings a nice skillset, has worked for the city, proven track record, shows up, does things the right way, she develops and comes up with lots of or contributes heavily to the programming that occurs there at the library. So she's already creative building some of that. Um. Teachers are always great, they're always awesome learners, um, and so we're hopeful that, uh, she can come in and um, hit the ground running a little bit on different projects, but also just on the tasks that need to be executed to operate.
And I will, um. Just tell everybody from the day I spent here on Waterville Day, I don't know how Jen gets anything done because either the phone's ringing or somebody's coming in the door. And, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
And that's a nice, that's one of the things back to the technology piece, right, is our technology piece, every single pool pass that goes, that is sold, is sold at that window for our pool, and so if we have three hundred people, we're doing three hundred transactions of pool passes, and that includes handing in the pass, taking their paperwork, copying their paperwork, et cetera, so that software also is another chance where we're trying to invest in efficiency. But she's handling all those pool passes, which once the pool opened, it's almost like the traffic doubled or opened even more. So, we're just really looking for an approval here, we settled at twenty-five dollars, um. With her, I'm sorry, yeah.
All I wanna say is I did apply and I did not get a response.
Certainly.
From the city that you got my application or that you were gonna offer the job for somebody else, so that would be an applied thing for any applications that were not considered to be a response to be sent.
Yes, certainly, and I don't know if you've paid attention to our agendas, this is the second person we've tried to hire. Um, and, and what we have third technically, what we have been very cognizant of doing is being careful to close and let anybody know they're out of consideration because we have revisited the candidate pool three times now. Um, and we actually have ongoing debate whether we're actually going to close the position or whether we're going to seek approval to hire a third person out of the candidate pool. It's been very convoluted and we apologize, uh, obviously.
For, thank you for your application, you're in consideration, we don't have to be in there in consideration, it's just that you received the.
Application, did you submit your application via email or how?
Sir.
Okay, thank you for letting us know that. We should have acknowledged that we received your application.
Yep.
Certainly.
Great, thanks for bringing it up.
Certainly.
Who we approved, also.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Oh, okay, approval unanimous. Consideration and.
Jen, do we have a, I wanna get the vote done first, we have an onboarding process for people, um.
Yeah.
It's all of those things. So we, you know, started off.
Yeah, there's the there's the handbook that will be handed to them, there's the W four forms that all need to be filled out.
Right.
Gather all of her pers, yeah, all of that information, yeah.
Okay.
And ready to go.
Obviously, some was a matter, I didn't know if we wanted to do a a lunch or something for employees and the new employee and the council one. You know, we got weird rules about whether we can do that all at once or not, is there something we wanna do for new employee to?
As long as you don't discuss business. As long as you don't make any decisions about business.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great thought, I think we should pinpoint, um. I think it's a great, I think if you could figure out with Danielle, when we could do that, and then we could throw the invite out.
Or we wait if we're gonna look at a third.
Or we wait if we're gonna look at a third.
We could.
Wait and down the road and do it.
Yeah. And I think.
That's a discussion, I think. Immediately, do we wait two to three months?
We're trying to figure out, we're trying to figure out what we need here.
And see where she fits in and where her.
So I think if you could. If you could find us a time when we could get together and be introduced to Danielle that works with Danielle and even if it's a, even if it's a quick drop in or. Um, a time period, or I think it's a great gesture to do that, yep, and then I think. In conjunction with, in with those type of questions, will you ask those, will you ask those in the discussion, can you bring those up in the discussion phase and then after we approve? Cause after we approve technically all discussion associated with.
Right.
After we approve, like just a point of order, they would say in Robert's rule, after we approve that, we need to cease the discussion associated with it, so.
Alright.
Don't hesitate to bring it up.
Okay.
We'll just discuss it before they, uh, uh, but, but the Roberts rule would say we need to discuss it. The discussion has to cease at that point, so if we just have that right before.
Okay.
Not a big deal, really, we're pretty laid back, but just a point of order for you. Um. Consideration and possible approval of resolution forty-four, this is the fiscal year twenty twenty-five salary resolution. I would really like to, I, I'm committed to, we have to walk out of here with this approved, I do not want to be in a retro phase. Now that we've added the twenty-fourth, we could continue discussion on the twenty-fourth, but I just want the council to know that. To me, it would be unacceptable to not have the salaries approved for July first. The new, the new calendar year, I don't, we don't, we're not doing the retro pay thing, we're gonna get this done before the first. I know a sheet was provided to us with some information.
Yeah, did you guys saw it?
And Craig also provided the.
Walk us through at library kindergarten, Craig.
Well, this is, this is updated based on the file that Jen sent up earlier.
Okay.
Um. On the far right, sorry, all the employees are listed on the left. On the far right is the surrounding communities and to the best of my ability. What their equal position is being paid. Cause I know that's been a topic in prior years, and so are we competing well or are we not? And then the middle section is, uh, there's a title row at the top that lists off the years. And the wages, the, all of the, the supporting data. So the, towards the far right where it says twenty-four, twenty-five, that's all of the.
On the very top of it there, it's segmented over one, two, three, four, five years. So then he's just plugged in, hey, what type of increases this, or, or what does that look like?
So there was recommendations on all the Mark's people, well, it's not Jen's people, but the other Jen, those are all in there.
Yeah.
Just for comparative basis.
And I would say, I was at the library board meeting, I was a part of the discussion, I'm supportive of what the library boards decided to do. I think historically we follow that recommendation and don't override what the library board's elected to do, so unless there's, unless there's, uh. Specific thoughts on what the, I think we could look at it this way, if you guys don't mind, if we could look at that library section. Is, is there concerns or issues with that portion that the library board has brought to us? If there's not, then we can kinda agree that we're settled there, so we can hone in on. Um, next, if we could hone in just on Mark and the public works. Mark has. Yep, at the very bottom. Mark, you've proposed some things here, do you want to just explain? Uh, some reasoning, because there's some differences.
There is, I, I. I go off the. A little bit of everything, I guess, um. We have, you know, Cory's new, so obviously glad to have him, but on the other hand, I don't think he. He doesn't need what Zach needs, you know, I think Zach is our future for this town. He's, we're, we're lucky to have him back. For, for those of you that don't know that he left for a while, um.
He's pursued extra certifications, he's continuing.
He is, he's quality, we do not want him to lose. Um, and, and I mean, I, I would say fifteen percent, I would, I would be very upset if we didn't get at least that. That's a number. Jason, I, I, I could probably go five to ten percent with him, but I think Zach needs to be at least fifteen and.
And just, yeah.
Um. Cory, around that five to ten, you know, a normal rate, you know, just normal.
So you're kinda looking at Cory's right now, would you say is just kinda like, hey, this is what. I feel like is the floor on, this is the raise, you know, the cost of living. Is my five percent number.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know what cost of living is this year. Um, but that's what I would say.
And I'm just gonna point out, the thirty dollars and fifty-nine cents for, for Zach is, is fifteen percent, he, he, you. We, we may have missed communicating, yeah, there was a mid-season adjustment because he got a certification, so.
So the.
Well, that's nothing.
I'm looking, the, the reason it says eighteen percent here is I'm going back to.
The mid-year adjustment, yeah, okay.
The resolution from last year.
Yep. Okay. Does anybody have thoughts around those three and the, the raises that have been proposed, thanks for proposing them, this is not an easy task always, especially when it's public.
Yep.
My two cents, cause obviously I spent some time. I appreciate what you did for those guys, Mark, uh, that gets them up. To a more fair wage, I tried to look at that median wages for Slater. Um, and it seemed like those guys were lagging.
Yeah.
Against their competition and against the, the median wages of Slater.
Sure.
So, yeah, uh, I'm supportive of what we did, those two.
Sean, you, you feel okay with the public works section?
Yeah.
Excluding Mark at the moment?
And I think, uh. The exact does have a little more. You know, took it a little more than that. I think, I think it seems fair. And obviously with Cory, they're getting to know him, but he's given some time. I think it's all stuff he can, he can take the steps, he's young enough.
Yep.
But I think it's, that's still a, a good wage for a person of his stature, starting out in this new job, I think that's, I think that's fair.
And I think he's fit in with the group well, and I think he's showing up every single morning, which is. Which is exactly what we would, you know, we want, and so we're thankful for that. So if everybody's okay here, Sue, did you have any public works thoughts that you wanted to? You're okay there?
Comparables were nicely in the middle. So, yes, I think Mark's recommendations are good.
Okay, so those are good, um. So then that really leaves us to talk about, we've already approved Danielle, so that leads us for, to talk about Mark and Jen specifically. You can go home, I, I'd be happy to go home if you guys wanna discuss me, I think is what we, has volunteered at this point.
Road closures, that's.
How do you, how is this historically been done, do you guys choose to leave or actively participate historically? You probably actively.
I, I've been through both, I, I don't like it, but.
You don't like to be in the room?
I don't.
Okay.
But I don't like to be in the room. I mean. I just won't say anything, you don't really don't matter.
Yeah, I usually don't say anything.
Yeah, I, I don't personally care, I think we're recording this, it's gonna be public record, do you wanna listen to it now, or do you wanna watch it later? I think so, I don't think we should hide from what we're gonna say or stand behind, we should have some merit behind it.
I started off last month, started off this one. Uh, I did this based on, uh, the, the five columns to the right, the surrounding communities. Uh, and it seems like previous councils. Uh, my comments on the, the next year down, especially Mark's guys and Jen Bogarties. Uh, it seemed like they were light. Uh, it seemed like you focused, if you look to the left, it looks like over the last couple of years, you guys have focused on trying to get Mark and Jenna. It seemed like they were more competitive already. Uh, I did look at the three percent and the five percent. If you look at no overtime, if you compare that to last year. Uh, if we go up three percent for Mark and Jen, your total budget goes up by five point seven percent, which is twenty-six thousand. Across all employees, full-time employees. Uh, and if we go five percent, uh, it goes up just shy of thirty thousand, then the total. Wage package for all employees goes up six point four percent. So, uh, looking at surrounding those kind of things, I was thinking that three to five percent. Beats us competitive.
And just to clarify, just to uh make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, you're saying when we, if you give a three percent wage increase, the offsetting fringe, the retirement. Those costs, is that two percent difference when you're saying?
I was looking only at, uh, salary or wages. So I was suggesting three percent costs you another twenty-six thousand, if we did five percent, it costs you almost thirty thousand.
The city of Slater.
The city of Slater, and then the, uh, the, that percentage for all full-time employees would be five point seven or six point four percent. Because, uh, not, obviously some of the other employees who moved up a higher percentage. That's why. The, the scheme was that way, but I ultimately, I guess what I'm saying is, I think where we're at financially is affordable. Um, maybe that's too much of my history, they said, this is a lot of money you got, spread it however you want, we can get another dime. So maybe that's not the way this is gonna handle in the future, I just wanna let people know that it's twenty-five or thirty thousand dollar increase. Against the, basically half million dollar and full-time salary. Two thousand eighty hours a year budget.
I feel like we, we did make some good adjustments in the last couple of years. Um, that being said, I still think five percent, anything less than five percent is not fair for the economy we're in. Yeah, well, I agree. I would.
That's, what do the departments have actually put on their budgets for, for basis?
I think it averages, uh, eight percent across the board. In budgets.
But we're still under that even if we went with five percent, cause that only adds up to six point four, so overall budget, I forgot to look at that, Jen, thank you. Overall budget, we're still finding even for over five.
That you guys are comparing the other towns to similar sizes, which is what I would expect. But today's economy, being twenty minutes agents and twenty minutes of the wine. You're all gonna know your employees. That have the time. To a larger town.
No, absolutely, and that's why we've tried to get them, get them up.
Yep.
And when you're talking percentage, are you including this, your type or snatch?
No, I'm looking purely at.
Just pure hourly.
Two thousand eighty hours, I didn't mean some overtime, I didn't.
So everybody's hourly of salary.
Correct, no one is salary. So I'm just trying to figure out apples to apples.
Right.
But you're like under your twenty-three, twenty-four gross wages includes overtime.
Yep, it sure does.
Does, yeah. And I, that was eleven months, Jen gave me the report through the end of May, and I added whatever that was, nine percent. To extrapolate to where roughly will be at the end of the month, end of the fiscal year in June.
When you compare it to some of the other cities that report them as a, as an annual wage, those, that's what an annual wage would be. On a, on a twenty-eighty.
Two thousand eighty.
Not including any overtime. I say you're not, so we're not comparing apples to apples.
Right, I think where I had a hard number, cause I went to their June reports from last year, I think when I had a salary, I think it is a salary position.
Right.
And it was an hourly position, I put down the hourly rate, that's why the numbers look a little bit.
Right.
And seventy grand is thirty-five bucks, more or less.
Yes. Pretty close. I would propose more like a seven percent. Than to, for those two, just because I know in addition to hours and, um. There's always a lot of overtime hours and phone calls that happen after, after work hours with these two in supervisory, um. And it's more than the work they put in, they care about what they do and they care about this city, and you won't get that when you, when you open a hiring position. And hire somebody. I think it's irreplaceable when you, when you factor that in, and I think that's, that's cheap.
I wasn't, I wasn't necessarily suggesting a number, I just started with the numbers together, I didn't want.
Right.
Every percent.
Yep.
One to sixteen.
Can I ask why we haven't considered, and maybe it's cause Jen and Mark's preference has been both. It does seem like towns that are, we're approaching a size of town where you would move to a salary-based position in each one of these roles. Um, obviously, you know, maybe it's individual preference has been keeping me hourly, cause I put in a lot of time afterwards, but. At what point does our city start to analyze and look at these positions as a salary-based employee, and, and rather than discussing. An hourly wage increase, which then is also an overtime wage increase and hypers increase, are we not discussing a bonus? You know, an end of year bonus in this discussion for the heads of our departments.
I think the bonus is your problem.
Well, I don't, I mean, the auditor might hate bonuses, but the reality is surrounding towns, that's a common, that's their common practice, is bonus, um. You know, so.
I never know salary.
Lot of our surrounding towns are do it, moving to some bonus instead of hourly. So they'll do a cost of living increase, and then they'll do a merit-based bonus.
And then that bonus is paid as a one-time lump sum?
Then they don't have to pay, well, like, and I always say they did that a little bit, where people that they didn't wanna bump up your base salary. But they wanted to recognize exemplary performance in a year, or if you're at the top of your salary range.
You're, you can't grow anymore, but.
So they found a loophole.
Usually I'm the one that drags us down, we're at home, but are we talking about doing this tonight?
No, 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 um, but I do think, but I'm asking the question, I'm asking the question for the history. Constantly, you know, we're constantly chasing this number and trying to be fair, is, maybe it's just better to assess. How much are we willing to pay, what's the quality that these guys bring, the combination of that, we need to guarantee that hourly income. And then look at it then as we're maintaining cost of living to stay in line with stuff.
Good.
You know, you guys bit it off in big chunks in the last couple of years to try to get, get to an annual, I mean, everybody's chasing a little bit of an annual number. Whether it's hourly or not, they're backing into it, and while we may have honest people who don't. Keep track of that themselves, you could work more overtime to get to those dollar amounts hypothetically, so. At what point does it become a salary, and you look, we start analyzing those workers that way, why have we not, or have we discussed that, and it's just fallen?
No.
It hasn't been discussed. In recent years that I. That I remember at all.
Don't get me wrong, Ken, I'm not against the idea, I just didn't. Except I'm usually the one making these things last.
You know, both ways, it's just as, if you're looking at it from an employee standpoint, and you're, and you get your cost of living and, but. But then I gotta. The next year, especially like a year if you switched council members and mayor and things, then. Well, we did this bonus last year, but somebody may not feel the worth of bonus, and then they're gonna take a cut and pay essentially from what they did the year before. Know what I mean? I'd rather up to their salary, cause I think they're doing the, I think they do that kinda work that they're doing year after year after year after year, so I'd rather up that salary rate. Year after year after year after year.
Where I don't, where I, where I don't like a salary for at least public works is if we have a bad winter.
That's just it.
You have a deratio, you have, you, you have any kind of storm, you could get screwed.
And also, I mean.
That's where I.
Looking back at that with FEMA money. How are you gonna say we bonus?
No overtime.
Twenty-five thousand FEMA or during his ratio because we didn't pay.
Cause you're only, you're only getting paid overtime.
Yeah, yeah, I would see public works being a hard time, a hard, hard spot to sell. Personally, especially if you're in a power truck, I mean, if you're not running a power truck, you had guys.
You're nothing.
You could salary you, but.
Yeah.
When you have, you have, you keep a seat warm.
Right.
Just for clarity, you were talking the department, right?
I'm, I'm just talking these two, and I think Mark's point is, that's, it struggles to work for you right now, because you may have a title of a department head, but you're a laborer as well. Is essentially your part in that sense, yeah.
Alright, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you may work the Saturday, you may work the Saturday based on conditions outside of our control.
You just, yeah.
Right, and Jennifer's basically saying the same thing, just like our discussion over July fifth. Well, that's nice, you can give me that as a holiday, but I'm gonna be in here with the shade closed, working because I gotta get council packets ready for Monday. So although still a department head. When the work, when the work has to get done, that's who's gonna end up doing the work. So I, so at this point, and the way we work, I think this, I think the, I think the hourly wage is a much more fair way. To make sure we're covering at least the hours that their seats are in the butt, not, not, that still isn't covering all the phone calls that happen after hours. And, and extra things that, that get done. I can see towards, moving towards that, but I just, I don't see it with what we have, what we have in place. I can see towards moving towards that, but I just, I don't see it with what we have, what we have in place. Want to pay.
Sue, did you have thoughts?
I think as long as our public works director is not in an office job, I think they need to remain hourly. As, as we move forward with the city and maybe have more staff and um. Like it's maybe we.
Yeah, and and any thoughts? You don't have to just be salary restricted.
Manager on a salary, but I don't put it out.
Yeah.
Your wage thoughts then?
I could align with Ken's suggestion of seven. I, I, I would be comfortable in the five to seven range. Percent.
Me too. We'd like to make a motion.
Craig, is that a comfort?
I'm going towards five, but I'm just looking at competitive. I'm not gonna object. We're only over seven if we want to do that.
That's fine. I move seven percent.
All second.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Anybody abstaining?
Or just.
You two, Mark and Jen, sorry, seven percent.
Yeah, and the rest of the salary structure, I'm okay with.
We're approving as, as proposed, as proposed otherwise.
You think, but you, Mark, you talked about Zach maybe should be a little higher than that?
No, I, I at least fifty.
He's still.
There we are, talking about it after.
He can, yes, go after and, you know, and get better in town and better.
So he does.
All right, so.
There's a motion for seven percent.
That was the emotional, let's redo, let's just redo it for clarity.
So with, with seven percent as.
Well, if I just.
Let's just redo it.
Fill in the seven percent.
Then I.
On the resolution.
Can we get a motion? Let's just motion seven percent for Mark and Jen and accepting all other proposed.
With that, accepting the rest of them. So that would, that would. Be a moot approval, resolution forty four with this seven percent for supervisory.
My second. Another is the same second. All those in favor of that? Opposed? Anybody abstaining? Perfect. Little cleaner there. Um. Do you have an update for us? Ken, quick on the dog park.
Water heater call. So that kind of blew my, some of my, but.
We just move.
No, we're fine. Um, I, I just wanna update. So what I've been working on, I think probably ball heard me talk a little bit briefly about it, if not. Side conversations, a dog park. Um, I think I'm gonna bring it at no cost for the city. Uh, we're talking about a space between the trail and a pretty new woven wire fence with posts. Um, so it would be west of the trail. Roughly behind a public works building and the Nighthawk.
You're talking city's trail.
On city owned property, west of the trail.
West of High Trestle.
West of the High Trestle Trail. Yes, not the city trail, west High Trestle Trail. Those trees would be a night.
But against the, of the existing event, right?
Using, using the west as the existing fence, it's a woven wire fence that may or may not work because some of those have holes that.
Oh, you may actually use the fence. Okay.
So I didn't put it by that bench. Nope, that fence is there. Um.
It's the west boundary.
Then we'd bring chain link fence to come around the north and south and along the, along the. High Trestle Trail, probably stay about five feet off the trail. I think it's enough. That would give us about forty feet. Why would you guess this building is maybe know off that, but I don't. I'm gonna guess it's gonna be, that park would probably be uh roughly the, roughly the width of this building and about a hundred feet long. This building's not that. So maybe the lots a hundred feet long. That, is that a fair guess?
But yeah.
If we went, if we went street to alley, it's probably about a hundred foot. So about this building wide and about the, the length of.
A hundred and forty two.
When the lot is.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, okay. So not that long.
It's a sizable.
Yeah, well.
Four hundred square feet or.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, so when you say sizable, a lot of them are five acres in, in, in city.
For Slater.
We're not talking about.
This will be the most sizable dog.
You're talking about it. You're talking about free. You're talking about on land that we already have. Uh, visible for people that are going by on the trail. Um. Easily walkable for a beer that you can walk over there. Um. From the, from the Nighthawk. Um. The substrate probably putting mulch. Um. We can get mulch. We might, I might have to borrow dump trucks.
Essentially, the whole project is in in kind donations or will fundraise privately. It's what Ken's thinking. It's using land that's currently not occupied or used in any other way, but weed growing. Um, and would be in addition to the community for a tr- a kind of a trial run basis to determine.
A lot of them will have two zones. They'll have a large dog and a small dog park. So you don't have, so you don't have a lot of mixing of sizes. This would be a one time run, see if, see how it works. And if it gets used and overused, then we could go. You could go uh almost a hundred yards further south alongside that trail. If you really wanted to, it's just gonna be long and barren. The um. Uh, if we buy the fence, Huber will put it in for free in kind. Um. The uh, talked to Mark a little bit about it, kind of laying it out a little bit and, and um, but, and I've talked to Parks and Rec, they're. They're uh in favor of it in kind. So I just gotta work out details and make sure I got money coming in and um. But I wanted to make sure.
I think you're, I think they're supportive.
Any questions?
Keep us up.
Where the new sewer went through.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's rip rap that comes up there, just, just right about to where the Nighthawk. Would come out. So you gotta stay away from that. And then, and it goes just south from there. And there's a fire hydrant in there. That can work.
We may have access to water that way.
Hole so you can stay away from it. Um. The idea, we'd probably, probably put up trail cameras so we can monitor whether people are picking up after themselves or not, because it'd be harder to see on mulch than it would be on grass.
Yeah.
And it's just a matter of roundup so that it's not, it's not something that's hopefully gotta be mowed and things like that.
And we've checked with insurance. There's no additional liability insurance needed, so.
Yep, it'd have signs on there. It would, we would not require people to have a tag, license, sign up. We don't license the dogs in the city anyway, and, and so it'd just be a nightmare to keep track of. Um, sign would say that they're required to be vaccinated. Um, but, but. Realistically, they gotta have a rabies tag on them when they're there. That way you can monitor that part of it. Um. Most of them have a whole, there's a standard, pretty much set of rules for them. You don't let kids under ten go in there at all under any circumstances. They gotta be. Pick your number sixteen, eighteen to be the person in there with a dog. Um. Dogs that show some signs of aggression. Again, you look at your video and you say.
So dogs not welcome here. Will you come up with a list? Make something.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a spot for a small camper or anything for someone to live there on site?
Looking for.
I'm thinking retired Ken is out there. He's got a small little snack shack and sells snacks and monitors the dog park.
Sell, sell stock.
Uh, just.
Get me out of the weeks and steal from running my dog there.
If you'll just keep us updated as details come and if you get to the point where you're ready to go, if you have a.
Yeah.
Little bit of a drawing basis or something.
Yeah, I was hoping to have a drawing tonight, though.
All right, no worries. I don't wanna cut you short on the dog park, but.
No, I wanna move on.
Uh, we should, uh, this is a topic of concern. It's getting Casey's approval for their cigarette tobacco permit for the Casey's general store effective July first, twenty twenty four to the thirtieth. Uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. We had tabled this issue. Um, for contact to Casey's to just ask if they wouldn't mind investing in emptying the trash cans before they get another liquor li- or another cigarette license. Did we get ahold of them?
No response.
Okay. Do you think they'll come looking for this if they don't have it after this meeting?
Yeah.
I would like to table it again if we're gonna meet the twenty fourth. I mean, I hate to be that way, but I, the standard of our Casey's and I know other Casey's are the same way, but.
There are other ones that are not though, so it's about the management.
It's almost embar- it's almost embarrassing. It is embarrassing.
They know.
My neighbor's boss at other Casey's and said, hey, see how bad one in Slater is.
And we may not be able to push Casey's around, and that's really maybe not the goal here. It'd just be nice to see a liaison of some sort engage with us and talk about what we can do to fix it and how else are we gonna get them here? If you've tried to contact them and can't.
Yeah.
Can we contact them again and remind them that?
Yeah.
We would like to.
Can keep pressing it, yeah.
Motion to table this till the twenty fourth of June.
We table this till the twenty fourth of June.
Second.
Second.
Throws it into discussion. So I have a question. What happens, Jen, if we, if we don't approve one by July first?
They can't sell them.
And it's not like liquor license where they can, where they can give them anyway.
The state could override, but usually they. Usually they adhere to the cities.
Unfortunately, a lot of residents.
Is it a company store or private?
They're all, they're all companies.
One private.
All right, so we've got two motions. Uh, if there's no more discussion, then can we just have a vote? All those uh, all those in favor? For tabling this amendment to the, or this resolution to. This approval to the twenty fourth of June, ta- uh, tabling it, all those that approve. Oppose?
Anybody abstaining?
All right, thank you. Um, approval of the liquor license for Beer Co. Rolling Taps, the third and fourth. This is pending their dram shop. Um. Questions about that? This is the rolling taps, the old antique truck with the taps inside of it. Same one as last year?
Beer food truck.
Cool business? Can I get a motion if nobody has?
I make a motion to approve the liquor license for Beer Co. Rolling Taps.
Any discussion? Throw that in there for you, Ken. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, uh, approval of some street closures for the Fourth of July events. These are probably, I assume, copied from a year ago's. Our parade route, eight AM to twelve, uh, Main Street to Green to Tama, Tama Street from Main Street to Fourth, Fourth from Tama to Tama Street to Green, Green to Street to Main Street to Fifth Ave. Um, the Kitty Parade, can you just remind me? I have a vested interest in the location. Do we close Main Street? We don't close Main Street.
It takes ten, it, it takes fifteen minutes for them to line up and ten minutes.
Well, I know, I'm very, I'm, I'm very, they're overflowing. Typically, they're selecting their beverage of choice for the walk in my garage. Um. But we don't technically close Main Street now. Okay. All right.
Will we consider uh no parking on uh Green Street and Fourth Street down around the fifth?
We did.
Oh, yeah.
June, yeah, parade route. You're talking for parade route?
This will be.
A. Parade route A, the very last part, part of it is Green Street from Main Street to Fifth.
But this is just street closer.
Green Street. Yeah, this is the act that going out, clear fifth.
Green to fifth.
Yeah, well, that, that takes it, that takes Green Street all the way to Fifth.
Yeah.
I want from green from, from Fourth Street.
Yep, it is. It is. It just happens to be from Main Street to Fifth instead of just.
Fourth to jog.
Instead of just Fourth to Fifth.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep.
That'd be the fifth.
Yeah, we'll just have to remember to put the signs that wrap around green there.
Yeah.
So, so you want, yeah, so Green Street South wrap around Fifth, exit out of town on Boone to two ten.
Yeah, no parking.
Yep, so no parking on Fifth and Green is what you're asking about? But parking is allowed on Boone. And we're in agreement because we're closing that street, but we're not necessarily marking it no parking. Does that matter?
I think we need to mark.
No, I'll mark that.
On green, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a, we'll, we'll do something.
We have it in the past.
Right.
Can we specifically add to this? Just amend this wording to say Green Street to Main Street to Fifth Ave plus no parking? Do you use a, can we do symbols in the official minutes reporting? No parking and no parking. Yep, we got that one. So the Kitty Parade, right, we're Tama to Ma- uh. From Tama Main to Fourth Ave down to the park as always. Uh, then July third, we have noon. On July fourth at ten PM, Third Ave from Benton to Tama, Fourth Ave from Benton to Tama, Fifth Ave from the west side of the bank driveway to Benton. Benton from Third Ave to Fifth Ave, Tama from Third Ave to Fourth Ave.
So all the way around the park, all four sides.
Yep.
And then going down Benton all the way to the bank to Fifth. And then up to the main drive.
Perfect.
I know we've approved the street closure for Fourth July.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Anybody abstaining? Unanimous. Approval of fireworks permit for Fourth of July celebration, July third at ten PM.
Do we need a rain date in there?
Yeah, rain date for four.
Yeah, I, I would move with the rain date on four.
Second.
All those in, go ahead, Sue. Yep. Any discussion?
Do we have an application with a, someone who is signed who?
Yes.
Has the appropriate credentials?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Uh, this was one other question. This came up. I can't remember where this came up. Last year, we launched them from the Nighthawk Field.
No. From the little league field. We did shake items from the outfield of Nighthawk.
Got it, okay. The majority are from the Little League field.
All the mortars.
That was just a question.
Dug in.
Failed or whatever, you know.
Oh, Lord.
So. Asked and answered.
Motion was to prove it with the rain data.
With the rain data, the, the fourth.
Sorry, fourth.
Rain data, the fourth. Okay, and we got a second. Ken seconded. Um, all those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Anybody abstaining? Okay, uh, approval of street closure for five oh one Main Street, the station, four thirty to nine. Already reached out about this request. They're looking to do a bike night. I don't know if you guys saw, there was a breakfast or a morning pass through of some retired firefighters and police officers, the iron clad defenders or something. Um, that were here a week ago or so. They're looking to do something similar, it sounds like, on three dates. Any other details that you guys would wanna share?
Uh, we were interested in closing the street off just for safety, you know, just to keep additional cars and.
Yeah.
Food truck, food truck would be out there as well.
Can I ask a? Yeah. Can I ask a question? We, historically, and I don't know if we've discussed this ever. Uh, obviously, totally supportive of different events that bring crowds into town. That's a, that's a positive thing. We wanna manage it. We're talking about closing five oh one Main Street. Have we not considered closing? Not our Main Street and either north or closing a section here? That is a, a less traveled section versus the main, hearing some of the concerns and allowing parking on both sides. I mean, would it be horrible if we closed this section from right here?
From Maine to.
To the alley. From Maine to the alley and the cars and the motorcycles parked this way. We already have some angled parking here already.
Plus a parking.
Plus a parking lot.
Feel like you better do a traffic, have a traffic count before you decide there's not much traffic here.
Yeah, those trucks don't have to be parked there. Well, it depends on the time of day, I guess.
But at that time period from six thirty to nine.
That's the thing that this is your. Well, yes, no.
I'm gonna ask, is it our truck route, right?
It is.
The worker is still, the post office is still open, so you impacting access to the post office.
Yeah, you'd take away the handicap.
Right, which isn't.
Not exactly highlighting their business.
Right, yeah. But this doesn't, uh, this doesn't give us in terms of exactly where we're talking about.
Not yet.
We need to have that.
We're talking, I assume you're asking for the same stretch that you have. From here.
Story Street to the west, right?
Story Street, so just from the story, just from right here to the alley.
The block, no, the block, the blue block.
As long as we're not blocking.
Which is like, that's only driveway you're really.
That's the only one there, yeah. This one, but this one looks.
Right, yeah. I mean, we could not block it all, the bikes can still park there. It's just you're gonna have. The traffic payouts there, we're just trying to. Cause there's some people who do drive up there pretty fast.
Oh, yeah.
So Story to Boone, Maine?
Yeah, there's. Middle of day to day, there's a couple of like flying past my office. Yeah, so.
When you approve it, we call the three of them.
Second.
All those in favor?
This is discussion.
Discussion.
To uh? Give Steve, that we already talked about the hundred most, cause he's the only one that actually has to turn.
Has driveway access?
On that scratch, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. He's your questioner.
And if we don't need to go that far, we definitely could stop it before his house.
No, I think we find, I wanna make sure that.
Alright, so we've got, we've got our two motions there. All those that approve? Oppose? Anybody abstain? Approval of liquor license renewal for five oh one Main Street, the station effective June twenty first, twenty twenty four through June twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Why do we do it June twenty first? Why do we do it instead of? Beginning or end of a month?
It depends on when they fight for it. Whenever the state finalized their approval.
And it stays that way forever?
Kinda.
Makes sense to the state. And that makes sense to the nurse.
I'll just want a second, this guy, I just wanna say really quick, if you guys could take some of those efforts on the generator there. And that, I personally got a couple complaints on Saturday night. I was obviously there for some of the lights music, just the vo- the volume level was maybe excessive. Um, uh, so if you guys could just be cognizant and courtesy of that and figure some of that generator out and then the sound levels, um.
I think the generator is a big spot.
A start.
I think if you can, I mean, some of the bands.
Three hundred bucks, we can buy a little housing that goes over the generator, we can face it different directions, go over the top of it.
Yeah. I think if you can make an investment to start that way, that would be. And we just see.
Little tailgate, you see all sorts of.
Yeah.
Covers, yeah.
Yeah, just make sure.
One guy trying to use. Those tables.
Tables.
And that doesn't work.
No, and that's what I mean, if like we tried sound deadening up there too, inside, you know, they make an insulation and. You guys, you guys were able to trim the windows I put in, so I know you're handy. You made them look straight, but yeah, there's something to put around, try to help. The bands and then people noise us.
Talk some food trucks, because I talk to people. They know. We tried it, we've had a couple trucks try it and shut their generators down. We've tried.
Cause of some emissions, yeah.
We already talked about the table scenario, we've had a couple trucks try that and it gets overheated. So that's gonna be the biggest issue because. Whether they have a loud generator or a quiet generator, they're expensive. And they don't run the risk of damaging it, so there's that. And then, of course, if it rains, some of them get real testy about that, so we have a tent. That we provide them, you know, just to protect it, so. But just know, we've talked with every single food truck, me personally, I've talked to every single one that has shown up there.
Yeah.
About how we can point it a different way or just anything we can do. To bring the sound level down. Most of them are receptive to it, but we a couple of times did have generators get overheated. And so that's their livelihood. And they, you know, so there's that.
Yeah. Did you? Ms. Nelson, did you have a comment?
I would like to say that I appreciate them closing the street when it, there's going to be like. The bicycles parking on both sides. For safe, one for safety, I'm worried about moving, I live with Greg, Burt's home.
Okay.
You know, my safety concern is kids. They would be there with their parents and play and go to the food truck and everything. That is, I'm glad that you are doing that. Pretty much so, and I understand that the generators is the biggest concern, it's sound. And maybe, I don't know, maybe blocking one side.
Yeah.
You know, maybe two sets of more of the sound goes up. And without. In closing, so they do.
I mean, I think ideally, right, if you can look into what's it cost to get your power to where it needs to be to get a plug in, that eliminates the whole conversation.
Yeah.
Um, but we understand, you gotta, it's a business, you have to weigh costs, but I think that's, that would be the ideal solution. Um, if if it's reasonable, and I think if it's an astronomical cost, we have an economic devo- development, you know, committee and funding. For businesses to improve the way they do business. This could be presented to them and that it could be loaned to you at, you know, zero percent. Which would hopefully pay for itself, that investment would. Did you wanna say something to us?
I hope the council will notice that the trend, I think going forward, will be the local people that live near the generators. We do, the people that live around here, it's one thing to say, yeah, I love.
Yeah.
I love food trucks, it's great, I got nothing against food trucks, I'm a small business guy, I'd love to see people out there bringing value and service to the community, it's great.
Yeah.
When you do it four or five times a week. And you go on years. And most of the time you pay no attention to your neighbors. And you just let it rain, you just let the noise rain and and at times you even purposely. Create noise at your neighbors.
Yeah.
I think that the trend, I hope the council will know this. That the trend is gonna be the people that live, it's easy to love the food trucks when you don't live here. There are, yes, it is a commercial district. That does not mean that you can just come in, put in any kind of half-baked business that you want. And make as much noise as you want. And everybody's gotta deal with it. Sure, you've talked with the food trucks and you talk to your neighbors.
That's why I agree, if it's the business model, we need to figure something out. Even if it's in every.
The box is not gonna fix it. The box is not gonna fix it. It sounds like Doratio every single weekend. The culture of this city is being dictated by it. We're trying to have a nice quiet, a nice quiet establishment. When there's constant droning. Of it's not food trucks, it's noise purposely pointed at us, it's bikes, it's people peeling out in front of us on purpose to create noise. And to create disruption, and until the council sees this. I think that we're gonna be in this same position. And I'll be sitting here frustrated. So I'm, I'm looking for a solution. I did power, we, we expect how much getting our, getting our shop ready? Or for to to open a proper business, we had to bring two twenty. Across, you know, it was expensive, we spent twelve thousand dollars on electrician. So do it, make it happen, if it's that, if it's. We had to. We put a, a twelve thousand dollar awning on the front of our building. For everybody to enjoy.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we definitely, we definitely hear you, and I think, I think we, we wanna try to figure that out, and we can't speak to, we, it's obvious and it's no secret in town. That there's a dispute between the two, you know, the businesses and that, I think that breaks everybody's heart because obviously, there's a, there's place for business in Slater. And we wanna foster and grow whatever those businesses are. But, you know, one of the things that early on, a lot of people said, why would you sign up for being the mayor? Why would you do that? Why would you wanna be in the middle of disputes? And so and so's dogged this and that, and I think that's the challenging thing in the situation is, we really have to be methodical about. How we go about and what is the right move to, you know, support the businesses that we do have, understanding the concerns and the noise and that and. I, I don't know what we can do or if we as city council or as citizens can find a way to get. You two businesses. Maybe not collaborating, but getting along, I think everybody at this table would love to see that and would go to levels to try to figure that out. Um, and think.
Generators up. Completely, make the generator noise go away. It needs to. It needs to, it's, it's wanting it for Slater sake, we don't want a town that is, that the soundtrack of the town is a generator. Nobody likes that, people likes, they come to small town because they want a quiet, nice Main Street experience, this town was that when we moved here. Yeah, I mean, it started before eight o'clock in the morning on Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah. I, I think it's heard, I, I hope it's heard, and I think. Um, I would like to think that, you know, Roger and Artie, you guys will look into that and come back to us if there's an opportunity to do something like that. But again, if, if I can play a role in you guys getting along and becoming civil and at working, that's the best outcome for all our residents here. Cause you guys bring two different unique things that, you know, citizens of different walks in our town appreciate each respectively, and so I.
So what's the, what, what, what are the power needs of most of those trucks?
It depends, I mean, they, they got fryers, different than they get in the middle of this.
I think it just takes investigation and understand that takes time and commitment, but I have. We'll make sure the Economic Development Committee reviews a proposal if your investment is to put. Some sort of power system, we can look into that and look at that cost and analyze that, I can't promise that they'll see and give that money there, but. It, it solves a problem for long term, you know.
It's, yeah.
That'd be great.
We give money to other developments in town, we, we should be able to consider that type of improvement.
Right.
Um.
Meantime. As you choose which food trucks, you might ask them what their. What their power usage and, and needs are and try not to use ones that are. They're gonna. You know, make the band turn up their volume, so everybody in the neighborhood has to listen to. A louder band so that they don't have to listen to generator in the background. Or just not a generator in the background. That would drive meanwhile. I'd be up here constantly.
Um, so can I just ask, what kind of guidelines do you guys use for your? What the volume of music is, and do you? Um, have a time of, you mean, when you turn, when you turn it down or?
We're done, we close at ten.
Okay.
Usually don't start till seven or my ten, ten, very easily is. Some nights more, but the.
Yeah, we guidelines about how loud, how loud you're going?
Usually it's just one of the bands.
Yeah.
We had the Crack Brothers on Saturday, so they were a little louder. I mean, what is a Nighthawk do?
I think you can talk to Jim.
They're in the residential.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah, we battled it too.
They got six, six piece bands.
That's why we did the trailers, so we could try to angle different ways, but then we just balanced it different areas.
And still complain.
Yep, and we just moves town, around town where, where they complain.
And we've got food trucks at, for Fourth of July, we got food trucks for baseball.
Yeah, but I mean, with the food trucks, that's fortunately, that's a, a weekend deal, it's not a business model of your whole season. That's why I was after.
Well, we don't make anything off of the food trucks.
You, you don't, but you do, I mean, if you didn't, you wouldn't.
Seventy-five percent of the people that come in, to eat, but just don't even come into the bar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they're there, stay longer, I mean, i- it works in your favor. You're not, you're not charging them, you're not getting paid from them, you're not getting a portion of their sales. But you're making money off them. And I think being neighborly, if you can get a power supply, I just think it, it would solve a lot.
Sounds like it's more than just the generators.
Well, a generator is the only thing I think you can control. I mean, the people noise, we battle it down, you're, you're never gonna get away. But the generators is something, as good neighbors, you guys can take care of.
Yeah, I can tell you that when you talk about the Fourth of July. Mini Club used to buy, um, motels for some of the neighbors.
Yeah.
Of the Fourth of July celebration, so just so you know, it, it's. It's been dealt with.
Yeah.
Before, so.
I think when it's just consistent, you know, it's gonna be consistent and all that, it's just. It's a good investment if it's gonna keep doing it, and I, I think if I'm coming there to use the food truck, I think a good neighborly thing from the residents is to. Give a buck to the business bringing the food truck, you know, we can't control that, but. We would love to consider a proposal if you guys have one to throw in. Some power for that, if you can figure it out. Thanks for your commitment to looking into it. So we had our two motions, um, did you get those written, written down, so we know where we're at? Okay, so all those, uh, that. Um. Approve. Say aye. All those that oppose? Anybody abstain? I think I've flipped between approving and, and in favor like a hundred times tonight, I can't wait to read these minutes. Um. We're moving now down to the approval of street closure for Marshall Street from Fourth Avenue to Fifth Avenue, six thirty to nine thirty on July third, twenty twenty four. We have some.
That's a private resident that Eddie Ray is doing a front porch.
She's doing the front porch, um, Community Center Library fundraiser she typically does, so she wants it closed where?
Or the, the block.
There'll be a food truck there, dude. Just saying.
Fourth and Fifth, okay.
I mean, we approve for the Fox Street closure.
Sorry, I was just looking at her, where's she at, making sure that was the right one. Okay, um, all those in favor? Oppose? Anybody abstain? Approval of street closure, Second Ave from Lynn Street to Cedar Street and Cedar Street. From Second Ave to South Property Line of two oh one Cedar Street from Saturday, July sixth at noon. Through Sunday, July seventh, noon for a block party, band and fireworks.
Time limits on the fireworks, I mean, they.
Who, what, this is a personal residence?
Yeah.
Block party.
Your boss party. They really need to go to noon the next day.
That was for cleanup purposes, they wanna be able to clean it up before people start driving over it.
Yeah, I just also kinda hope they would clean it up before they go in. Alright, but.
Well, I, we're kind of getting into a trend here that seems to be, it could be a slippery slope.
So these people, um, shoot off thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars worth of fireworks. I'm concerned, I think they're blocking up maybe one to three driveways? So I'm wondering about that.
Um, their own.
I'm actually, you know, if you guys would like to hear from me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um. You know, my name's Howard Higginson, I moved to Slater eight years ago, we've had our. Fourth of July party at our residence every year since. Um, we block off one person's driveway that is not involved in the block party. And we move for them, and that's, uh, John.
Johnny Walker.
Yeah.
Dennis Walker.
So Walker's driveway, but their whole family from down the street comes and sets up, you know, and watches in their front yard.
So they're, they're.
I do have a licensed firework guy, so we, we have buried fireworks also, okay? But we run, I run a licensed firework guy that takes care of all the fireworks. Um, they're wired together most of the time, we do have a very few we like, um. What, where my problem is, is the last two years in a row. I'm done at ten fifteen every year. So I've never ran late on my fireworks, I don't allow firecrackers after that. But it seems like people in town, they don't like the fireworks that I've laid off, so they come and they drive through my yard and. Run tracks and tell me how much of an ass I am at four in the morning. Telling me, you know, you kept me up all night, so I'm gonna keep you up all morning, they tried to run me down while I was sweeping the screen. I've had people actually veered out of their way. Um, so, yes, I do shoot off seven thousand dollars worth this year. It, you can't clean it up in an hour.
I see.
Especially at ten o'clock, now.
I didn't realize, I thought.
I rake four people's yards, ice, we are two blocks by hand.
I get it.
There's no cleanup for the city, there's no anything for the city. All my neighbors are involved in the party, there is a live band this year, the whole town of Slater is invited. Um, anybody can come, people would start setting up in kindergarten school and watching it and stuff, so. Um, it is David Burke and the prisoners in here that will be our live band, so. It's a, you know, I, I think they'll ten thousand dollars on it, and we make sure that we're very.
I actually asked him if he would be willing to donate that to the cities, we bet instead of his own, but.
I am gonna talk to you about your dog park. And, cause I, I am interested in, in funding some of that.
Well, thanks for being here.
Came tonight, uh, was to voice my opinion in case there was a problem with why I'm asking for. So much time, you know, it takes me seven hours to sweep two city blocks.
That makes sense.
This is just south of the school, right?
Yeah, just south of the school, I, I'm the only driveway on that block. That I'm asking to close other than the lawns.
Then they're on board.
They, their whole families came every year, I've never had a, I've never had an issue with it, they've never asked me not to do it, I. I water their lawn and make sure that anything lands on it, that we don't. I mean, we go all out to make sure we don't disturb our neighbors as little as possible.
Okay.
I'll second.
So essentially, sorry, I just wanna clarify just so I make sure I know. Lynn Street, so nobody will turn off our, our thirty-eight to the east. Right? And then down wrapping around the corner to your property line.
Yeah, the city actually closed it for us two years ago. Um, and then I closed it, it was my own barricades every year.
Yeah.
Never had much issue, but that's what I'm asking for is my property line.
Okay.
There is one other driveway involved, but he's involved in the party. We have a bounce house and. So he's involved in it.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure, so no, no traffic can even get down that section. And there's really. That's a nice scoop the loop golf cart route, you know, Fourth of July weekend. So I'm just making sure I understand. Nobody can turn in and turn around.
Eight feet, about seven feet open because there are a lot of people that attended in golf carts.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we've had a motion. We've had a second by Sue. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Perfect. Approval of liquor license renewal for Nighthawk Bar and Grill effective June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four through June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Sorry, you drew the, the third to last straw on the agenda tonight. For three hours to get a street closed. Um, any uh, discussion around the Nighthawk? Anybody from our Nighthawk expert, anything? No, approve it? Second. Sue seconds, all those in favor? Oppose? Anybody abstain? Approval of lease agreement for vendor at Main Street Market. How about some details?
So. He's a wine slushy vendor. She has to get a liquor license to do this. She's.
She's good.
She's gonna come, she's gonna come once July twenty-third. And um, but in order to get the liquor license, you have to have some kind of an agreement with the property owner. To be able to get your liquor license.
July twenty-third.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. Yeah, but she's got that little horse trailer. Is that what it is? Do you remember it?
One's called Wine Trailer.
Yeah, is that the one I'm thinking of?
That she's been in town before.
Yep.
Couple of years ago, yeah.
Everybody good with the lease?
She's been for the.
She's trying to get into the Fourth of July and hasn't been able to get in the Fourth of July. So because we do our. I thought I included it. It basically says it gives her the right to be there and. She had a couple of other dates, but the market's not going those couple of days. But I'm not seeing it in my packet either, so.
Uh, I think we're totally amendable to it, but waiting till the twenty-fourth so we can see the agreement. Does that matter? Uh, it, it, well, that one with the layer liquor license. Okay, so what are the things, what are, so, so uh, what are the things that are importantly seen in that lease agreement? Anybody to make sure?
Liability.
Anything else you guys care about?
That's only.
Okay.
Four to five days that she. Cause she's gonna have to a five day license. I believe that's the smallest. Yeah, they don't do it one day, so.
We have different levels, I think, and they used to.
Yeah, it's gonna change, it looks like.
I don't, I think you could go, Mark, if you want. For real, mine. You can go. I mean, we're just gonna look at the lease agreement and then adjourn. You're the one that's gotta be up and. Get the guys ready to go. I think you can be excused at this point. I don't think you need to be here to adjourn. I just wanna make sure.
Unless you would have made pizzas.
Yeah. There was one other thing I wanted to update, which this is totally, this is a, this is a. This is a total point of order here. Sue and Ken, I want you guys to hear this in a second. So I wanted to just bring up, well, she's grabbing that. I got a call today from Murney and Associates, M U R N E Y. Out of Springfield, Missouri. A representative um, for Dollar General called me and wanted to make sure that we're gonna get this approved and everything tonight for him. Um, and I explained him had gone through planning and zoning as an update and that was denied.
Yes, did I not put that on?
It was on here, but I was just explaining, somebody called me tonight. Um, expecting it to be on the agenda and we, I expressed to him that. The, I'm, he said, we discussed a year ago and you were all on board and said this community could use it. And I said, I think you've got me confused with somebody and he said, well, I was like, I'm just the new mayor. He said, oh, well, I talked to the new mayor and he said that the city would support it. And I said, I'm sorry, but I, the ci- citizens have spoke and spoke heavily against that addition of a Dollar General. We have one six miles east and six miles west, and there's a lot of discussion around the quality of. The way it's maintained and just the lack of a need for one when they're so close. So I think he was frustrated. He was polite, but said goodbye, but I. I think I reiterated that I didn't think we were gonna support something like that. And then it failed through planning and zoning. And he made the comp, no, our planned and zone. It's inside of our two mile radius, so it, we've gotta execute this step to get to the next step. So essentially, just so you know, that conversation was had and he made a comment at the end that said something like, well, we'll just dredge on then or something. And I said, okay, so. I just thought I'd say that while you were grabbing the lease agreement.
Um, it's pretty simple. It says this agreement made and entered into on whatever date. Um, between city of Slater Farmers Market leaseer, which is Don Thompson of Cloud Wine, doing businesses Lucky Wife Wine Slushies. In consideration of mutual premises contained herein, the parties agree as follows. Premises, the. Leaseer agrees to lease the leasee a portion of the property located at four oh five Main Street, the empty li- uh, Slater Iowa with the zip code. As designated by the leaseer, parties agree to abide by the applicable ordinances. The term is, leaseer agrees to lease said premises to leasee on the twenty-third day of July. For one day.
You probably do that for five days. You show five gray license, I guess.
She's the one that drew that up.
Prove it so to five days. And so then she'll have to park on. Stop the part on the property, not in the street then. Or since we own the street. I don't know. I, I'm just asking so that it's not.
So the one thing I, when I, I don't see any reliability release on here. The timeframe I see. And do we need to put a timeframe relate? I mean, you probably don't, right? But do you input your? During, during uh, you have to limit time hours. Do you want to limit the hours? Not that somebody's gonna violate that, but can you do that or not? Probably can't do that on the license. Okay.
If you do the lease for five days though, can she be there for five days?
In theory. Yep. In theory. So. I think you just do the five days if you have to, but we need to add a liability release or something. Which, does that mean considering?
Well, then obviously do we have to have a copy of her gram shop?
Yeah.
It was out in the.
Yeah, it'll come back to us as a.
I mean, is it, is that part of our agreement or is that?
Part of the liquor license, gram shops.
Right.
So I would, um, how about a motion to approve the lease agreement? To include the liability release extended. Up to five days. For July twenty-third.
If necessary for the permit.
And you could even do the July twenty-second through the twenty-seventh, the day before, whatever and.
She orders it to be how it would.
Yeah.
Probably work out.
I think basically a motion to approve under the expectation that general had in the liability requirement and the five day period. Motion to approve that?
I'll move, I'll second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Anybody abstain? Okay. We're at the end here, so.
Your, your note before um, Dollar.
My note before Dollar General.
What or when does that go before the county? Do we know zoning or? I mean, county has to approve it if it's in the county, right?
The supervisors too have indicated to me that personally directly not indicated to me via channel directly. They will not. Contest our ruling, should we say we don't want it.
Right.
So I fully expect that the county's totally gonna honor our stance.
We, we had any experience with Story County planning and zoning?
I have not, but.
Adjustment doesn't, doesn't take planning and zoning's. Uh, recommendations and they go on their own.
And I appreciate that, but it's gonna have to get approved by the supervisors. And the supervisors have told me they're unhappy with the operations of Dollar General and some of their communities. They will not. They would not, they're gonna support the city. Now, things change, it's politics, I get it, but I don't know what else we can.
No, I don't. No, I know. I just, I just didn't know where it's at in the process because I can tell you that.
I think we were supposed to have it on our agenda tonight. We'll have to add it in on the twenty-fourth. Um, it'll get added in on the twenty-fourth and then what we'll be able to do is hopefully execute on the twenty-fourth and then it'll go to the county on their next meeting.
Alls we can do is not allow the subdivision.
We cannot allow the subdivision.
We can accept or deny the subdivision of the land. That's, that's the extent of our power.
Which planning and zoning historically have followed what we've done on that.
What are we running to legally if we don't allow that subdivision, but we allow subdivision out there? Is it because, well, like Harris's Corner?
Seavers and all that.
Yeah, didn't we just allow subdivision? But one of Harrison's this bottom of the corner there.
Oh, that, you're talking, um, that was a little further outside.
That was um.
Oh, yeah.
Just separating them.
Planning and zoning laid out six or seven items as to why it was denied.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't fit with our, it doesn't fit with our, our growth plan, our comprehensive plan. It's a, it's, it's traffic issues. It's a, it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It, they had several.
No, that's good.
Drainage issues.
County neighborhood. We are all county out there.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's gotta be in a floodplain.
It's, it's not.
It's not a floodplain.
We'll have to have it, we'll have to have it on our agenda on June twenty-fifth explicitly.
Yeah.
Stakeholder, obviously.
Property.
In some way, property owner. Okay, fabulous. Good. Thanks for being here.
I'd like to share our position on it, cause it. We've struggled with this for a very long time, even deciding to allow them to look at it. And. Whether I can hold that till twenty-fifth, if you'd like. Since it didn't make tonight's agenda.
No, I think I would like to hear.
I think you're welcome to share if you want.
Yeah.
We can't vote on an action item, but you can definitely share and you'd obviously be invited back and welcome at the next meeting. This meeting's recorded and hopefully we'll have it posted next month, um, somehow. We'd be happy to hear from you as the property owner.
So as the property owner, we were approached. As a cold call about this. And we struggled with it for probably. At least ten months. Figuring back and forth about whether or not it was a good decision. And for the same reasons that the city's position is, it's already a busy street, but it's also a main thoroughfare. For people coming from full city, we've come Rankney, everybody going to Ames and vice versa. We also know all of our neighbors and. Realize that it's not necessarily something that anybody wants to see as their neighbor is a Dollar General. So within our contract, we negotiated things to make sure that that was minimized and the things were gonna be taken care of. As far as not to be visually disruptive to any of our neighbors. Not to have lights that were gonna be very bright and cause issues late at night, cause I don't want that. Nobody wants that. Whether or not our community can support it as far as whether it would be a good business to have there. And if we would give them enough business to stay business. I don't see that as our issue. If they fail, because we do, they have all the other places to go shopping as far as there's one in Madden, there's one in Huxley. Ames is right there, Ankeny's right there. I, I don't disagree with that part of it. But I. Don't see a reason to fight it. If they wanna try, why not let them try?
I think my biggest standpoint and appreciate your thoughts. I mean, are you aware of the, the ongoing litigation that they have going on in like eight states right now? For price gouging, price transparency gouging? They're, they're a very unethical business and it's been uncovered. So I think that's a primary one, um, is that ultimately, I think. My stance is formulated based on what the residents have spoken, and this topic obviously has gone around town, obviously without ever being an official general item. I really think it just boils down to some of the, the way that they do business, you know, if you've been to the Huxley one. Did, I mean, I don't know if you saw, but a week ago, they basically, the employees walked out and put a sign on the door and said, they don't pay us, we're closed. I mean, so I, I think we're worried about those type of concerns and I grew up in Madrid, when it mattered came and have impacted all the other businesses in town in a negative way. And their condition of their building is that. And so. When you.
That specific business that you're against or is it against dividing my property?
I think it's that specific business. It's that specific business.
Business down here, what would happen?
What's your business? I think we would analyze and look at that in a heartbeat.
I have hearts or names.
On board, what, what, let's talk about it. If you would, if you would seriously be interested in that, I think we'd.
On that property?
We would try to figure that out. It is specifically, I think, the business that is the resistance from the community.
It has issues coming off Lynn. I mean, just traffic a little bit, we'd have to look at and try to mitigate. I mean, we, we have traffic.
But that's a county thing.
It is, but we have a traffic count because of how fast people go.
Sixty, seventy, eighty miles an hour in my house, with my children and Andy.
For sure, for sure.
It's not fair.
It's known.
Yeah, and we're trying to do what we can, but the county's not very friendly to helping us.
So why not let us be since we're in the county?
As far as the Dollar General and that. Because of, because anything inside of our two mile boundary, we get to have a say in. What right or wrong, and the county can obviously choose over that, but I think it's really comes down to the operation of that specific business is not.
That specific business is not necessarily.
That's my biggest concern.
I, uh, the traffic thing is a concern, but to me, those concerns can be alleviated.
Well, I think it also depends on if the business is appropriate. So close to other homes.
Yeah.
Business period. Um, no, I'm saying it would be type of business dependent of, is it appropriate for a residential neighborhood? Traffic, well.
Would you be staying there?
Yeah.
You'd be staying there and the Dollar General would be your neighbor then? I think that's another concern, right? Is so you have an agreement that I think about as you've explained your stance, you have an agreement with them. They come in there and build and they say, oh yeah, we won't do any of these things. We won't do any of these things. It's my understanding that the developer of the Dollar General is not the operator. As soon as that transfer happens, what recourse are we gonna have to say you're. You're disruptive or you're noisy or this and that. And how do we go about mitigating? Cause now it's in the county. So now we get into the battle of, we were gonna have to annex you. To have power, to address it. So I think there's challenges from that standpoint too.
So all of those things, I think are things we could potentially work through. I would like to be able to have a discussion about it instead of just being shut down.
I, I think we can put this on the twenty-fourth. We can let people know it's coming and, and I think we can. Uh, one of my objectives in running for mayor was to make sure that publicly people knew what was going on, when it was going on. So they had the opportunity to participate in their government and decide and voice what was important, what wasn't important. We'll get it on the twenty-fourth. We'll advertise that we're having this discussion and, and hopefully we can get some good feedback and discussion around it. Um, and consider that, you know, motion that, uh, resolution, I guess, it'd be that we're considering. Um, from our planning and zoning team here, we'd be happy to do that. I mean, you deserve a fair opportunity and the respect of that opportunity. So we're never gonna take that away from you. But if the twenty-fourth would work or the twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth, if the twenty-fifth would work for you, then we can get that on there and talk about it and. Give an opportunity for people to comment. Well, you drew the last straw then evidently, and I apologize for that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We intended to have it on the meeting. Uh, or have it on the agenda, I think was the intention.
Absolutely.
Obviously, we had a longer meeting with a lot of convoluted topics. It's a little bit confusing with Fourth of July coming. But thanks for being here and I, I, you know, we appreciate that you wanna share the thoughts and reasoning and what, you know, logic behind it. It's not an easy decision, I'm sure, to invite Dollar General to be your neighbor. Um, so. Um, so we'll plan on the twenty-fifth then. What was your first name? Sorry. Kelly, okay, I mean, yeah, and if your day-to-day business wants to move here, we should figure out a solution to find a way to make it work. We have an economic development committee and we'd love to discuss what that looks like. And uh, funding and opportunities for that. So we'll see you on the twenty-fifth. Thank you for being here, sorry you had to wait to the end. Can we have a motion to adjourn if?
I move adjourn.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Anybody abstain? I know what, I know the different gestures and thought about. I haven't been here long, but I can tell you pretty quickly.
They settle. You think they're gonna come get it every night?
They might come while they're in town.
There was one at the fire, there was one I pointed out to them across the street from me, that was at the fire department, right? Long after they did it. The the pack that they fit in there, it went away and it was gone, but the, it's like it was gone, just like, I don't, just that'll leave nothing.
For water, the groundwater.
And it was in the concrete. I mean, I think Mark and those guys will be checking those and trying to figure out what they need to do, those excessive ones.
Well, once, yeah, cause once you bore, I mean, that's well, so basically wash that soil out of it.
Oh, yeah, they just suck it. And then you shove caves in and you get a cavity. Well, they can do it because they're, they're going for a whole distance.
Yeah, I didn't want her to stew for another.
I would say, um, yeah. So.